At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderman Kirby, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, I ask that you bestow your blessings upon this body as we embark on the business of the city, which each of us was elected to do. I want to thank you in advance because it's you who will lead, guide, and direct as only you can. I further ask that you let no man or woman depart this chamber with bitterness in their hearts. This I ask in your mighty, magnificent, powerful name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalitis.
Present.
Alderman Budge.
Here.
Alderman Peon.
Present.
Alderwoman Pendell Charles.
Present.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Lippman.
Present.
Alderman Kirby.
Present.
Alderman Pfeiffer. Alderman Arnett.
M.R.E.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the first item?
Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
To move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the M.R.E. Declaration of War 20th Anniversary.
Two, one, four, three. We are the M.R.E.
Two, one, four, three. We are the M.R.E. Two, one, four, three. We are the M.R.E.
We rehearsed it.
It shows.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, fellow citizens, friends of both. We, the justifiably proud people of the Maritime Republic of Eastport, the world's tiniest micro-nation, hereby announce that we are for, tug-of-war then is, the city of Annapolis. Hereby known as Westport, Eastport, and the Northside. According to our National Archives, this marks the 20th consecutive year that we have been compelled to take such drastic action. The reasons are self-evident, as dogs work with cats, as politicians work with other politicians, as Westport has more with Annapolis than Eastport, so it is us versus you, as it must never be so. The means are the same, word for word, a seventeen-hundred-foot rope to be tugged upon, that is, by representatives of the two entities at Annapolis.
Once more, this is an opportunity for all East Puerto Ricans worthy of the name to demonstrate their prowess at the art of rope tugging. This is when our citizenry demonstrates that years of childhood and adolescence spent tugging at ropes tied around trees around and about Eastport have not been spent in vain. Once more, we, the undefeated, shall triumph, as the record clearly shows, our superiority in rope tugging is beyond question, having compiled a hundred-and-twelve to eighteen margin of victory in all the individual tugs over the past twenty years. That the Westport loyalists might argue that they attain more individual tugs in any given year is of no consequence. And so, we cast down the gauntlet once more. Do you have the temerity, the nerve to show up at the city dock on Saturday, November the fourth, at the crack of noon? If so, you will be permitted temporary visas to cross the bridge over the Gulf of Eastport at the conclusion of the tugging events to attend the M.R.E. victory party on Second Street, also known as the Avenue of our glorious victory. May all of our sponsors be appreciated for their largesse, now totaling nearly six-hundred thousand dollars over the past two decades, and may all the targeted beneficiaries of monies accrued put them to worthwhile purposes. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor, as the Minister of War for the great Maritime Republic of Eastport, I challenge you and the Annapolis proper to the twentieth annual tug-of-war scheduled for Saturday, November fourth, at the crack of noon. What say you?
I will be there with my council members, and we will win.
Upper Republic!
Thank you for all the fun, and thank you for not damaging the television equipment.
Yeah, we're not out of here just yet.
What do you think of November fourth? What does Alderman Budge show on your desk? Why are you laughing? Who? Where?
What?
It's their baby. Their baby meeting on Wednesday at Harbor Master. I hope you're better. Nine a.m.
Two, one, four, three. We are the M.R.E.
Two, one, four, three. We are the M.R.E.
Two, one, four, three.
We are the M.R.E.
Two, one, four, three.
We are the M.R.E.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is...
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, beginning with the city council citation, Yevola S. Peters.
If Ms. Peters could join me at the front, please.
As everyone knows, good evening to everyone, first of all. Ms. Yevola, a little bit ago retired, and that's really not a good word for her, because she'll never retire. But anyway, we decided that even though she retired from Anarundale County Government, she has been a blessing to those of us in the city of Annapolis, and so, we decided that we would honor her with the City of Annapolis City Council Citation to Yevola S. Peters. On behalf of the citizens of Annapolis, we confer this city council citation upon Ms. Yevola S. Peters in recognition and celebration of her multi-decade contributions, including both her professional and volunteer career here in the city and in our surrounding Anarundale County. We acknowledge that Mrs. Peters has devoted her life to strengthening families and individuals to become productive citizens. Using her bachelor's and master's degrees has enabled her to connect with all residents. We applaud Mrs. Peters as the initial leader of the Community Action Agency, providing her with a unique opportunity to help those residents who needed her most. Mrs. Peters also has the proud distinction of having Yevola S. Peters Way in Ward Three named in her honor. She continues her work today secularly and spiritually, volunteering, mentoring, and ministering to everyone who comes within her sphere of influence. As we gather to celebrate her birthday in this month, which was last week of October, it is even more appropriate at this time to publicly thank Mrs. Peters for helping us make the city of Annapolis a better place for everyone. Her immeasurable contributions, along with her wisdom, kindness, and welcoming spirit have been gifts from which we have all benefited, and tonight, we honor her and her countless contributions to our community. Given under our hands in the great seal of the city of Annapolis this twenty-third day of October 2017, signed by our mayor, Michael J. Panalitis, Ward One Alderman Joe Budge, Ward Two Alderman Frederick M. Peon, Yours Truly Ward Three, Sheila M. Finlayson Ward Four Alderwoman, Jared Lippman Ward Five Alderman, Kenneth A. Kirby Ward Six Alderman, Ian Pfeiffer Ward Seven Alderman, and Ross H. Arnett III Ward Eight Alderman. Congratulations, and thank you, Ms. Yevola, for everything you do for us today, yesterday, and in the days to come.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ceremonial items to the New Breed Social Club.
Would you like to have the members join me at the front, please?
I attended various functions with this New Breed Social Club growing up as a child. A lot of the members are deceased. There was an entity in my childhood, but the one thing that I did notice throughout is later on, they became so well-known all over this city for such an Easter egg hunt that was held at J. Adams Academy, and if it rained, believe me, those parents were there in the rain, waiting to see if this hunt was going to happen. These guys died, six thousand eggs, and subsequently hit them for various age groups over that, which is now J. Adams Academy, but it used to be Adams Park Elementary, and children from all over this city participated in that hunt. They looked forward to that Easter Monday because they were all from school. So, I found this only fitting before I got out of here. They get they do. City of Annapolis, City Council Citation, New Breed Social Club. On behalf of the citizens of Annapolis, we confer this city council citation upon the members of the New Breed Social Club in recognition of your community service and youth leadership. We acknowledge that for the past twenty years that children at J. Adams Academy, formerly known as Adams Park Elementary School, have benefited from your Easter egg hunt along with the numerous other activities throughout the year. We applaud you for giving the parents and children from across the city something to look forward to, including athletic, social, and civic activities, enriching and supporting the lives of our local youth. Tonight, we honor the club and its members, countless contributions to our community, given under our hands in the great seal of the city of Annapolis this twenty-third day of October, the year 2017. Michael J. Panalitis, Alderman Joe Budge, Alderman Frederick Peon, Alderwoman Rhonda Pendell Charles, Alderwoman Sheila Finlayson, Alderman Jared Lippman, Alderman Kenneth Kirby, Alderman Ian Pfeiffer, Alderman Ross Arnett III.
I thank you for the award, trophy, certificate, but we had six thousand eggs. It was about a thousand hot dogs for the Staten Centers Parade after the parade, and to try to go to the stores and give me a thousand hot dogs, people looked at me like we're crazy. But we had some good times. We took some kids to circuses to play ball games, dancing in the street. We scored each housing authority to have a dance-off every Saturday. And a big one at the end of the year, we had like twenty-seven Michael Jacksons at one dance. We had our fun. Thank you, and thank you again for the...
Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Is there any order personally I'd like to present a report? Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee met on October the sixteenth here in chambers, and we dealt with two pieces of legislation, oh forty-six seventeen, Temporary Class C Alcoholic Beverage License, and our thirty-one seventeen proposed amendment to fiscal year 2018 fees, and we voted unanimously to recommend both of the amendments for approval to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The rules and city government met on October twelfth to take up most of the legislation that's on the agenda this evening. We will be meeting again next month, but with, or the month after next, with potentially many new faces.
Alderman Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Housing Human Welfare and Housing Community Development Committees met on October twenty-third. We had two pieces of business before the committee. One was an appointment, which was recommended favorably. The other was a piece of legislation, oh forty-five seventeen, which also was recommended favorably and will be dealt with tonight. Thank you.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October sixteenth, the Public Safety Committee met, five o'clock here in council chambers. We took up several pieces of legislation, two pieces that dealt with the wheel immobilization devices, and we gave unfavorable recommendations to those two. Oh thirty-seven seventeen, parking places and parking lots, which we gave a favorable recommendation, as well as R. twenty-four seventeen. We approved R. thirty-three seventeen with amendments, and we'll hear more about those as we deal with those pieces of legislation. And we did not give a recommendation on R. twenty-seven, hate-free zones. We had a very informative discussion, presentation, actually, by our fire chief and our two deputy fire chiefs about the Safe Stations Program. That is the program where residents can take someone with an addiction into one of our fire stations and seek help. And so, we learned about the procedure for that program and actually how it works. And we learned that one of the weaknesses in the program, and that program is in partnership with the county. We are kind of the model for this program. When someone goes into the station, the crisis response team is brought in. They have the expertise to analyze the condition of the person and then decide what type of facility will best serve their needs. One of the weaknesses was being able to find where there are beds for those people to be placed. And so, one of the highlights of that presentation was the fact that our MIT department is working with our Office of Emergency Preparedness, and they have developed a program, an Internet program, so that the fire department, as well as the crisis response team, can click on one button and find out where there are available beds within our area, which will very quickly expedite placing our residents in the needed care centers. Prior to that, they would simply have to call every hospital facility individually to find out where there's an empty bed. So now, this program, and it should get lots of positive attention and funding because this is going to expedite getting people into care considerably. I mean, it's truly state-of-the-art, and it was developed right here for our residents. So we heard about that new program. We also heard that so far, and this program has only been in existence for two or three months, so far, they have seen two-hundred-and-forty-five residents from around the county. Forty-five in the city alone. And our fire station on Forest Drive has the highest number with twenty-eight. I share those statistics to show just how much this program is needed and valued in our city, and to say that if you know others who are in need, please, 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 use our Safe Stations Program. And I think we're changing the name to Substance Abuse Program, Chief, because it isn't all about the opiate addiction. It is about any type of addiction. So, you know, the program is evolving, but truly, it is meeting the needs of our community. We heard from our police department, with an update from Chief Baker, about our community outreach. And for those of you who didn't hear, we're doing a new trick-or-treating program, trying to keep the children safe, and it's called trunk-or-treat. So we're going to be setting up, and I think they had one over the weekend. One will be coming up on the twenty-seventh, one coming up on my ward next week, to encourage families to bring their kids out to parking lots where there'll be lots of vehicles set up. They'll be decorated, and they'll be giving candy so kids don't have to go to the homes of strangers to get Halloween candy. And I think that is... Oh, and we had our poster, our annual poster contest. I think there were five schools recognized this year. Those young, three people from each of those schools were picked up on a fire truck and given a day with the fire department, and they met with the mayor, and they received their awards, first, second, third place for the annual poster contest. And I think that ends my report. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can speak to us for anything that's not already scheduled for a public hearing. So if you've come to talk about the revisions to the development review, we're going to have a public hearing on that. The first three people signed up to speak are Jackie Wells, Sandra Chapman, and Bishop Craig Coats. And as always, if everyone could state their name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Jacqueline Wells, 203 Bloomsbury Square, Annapolis, Maryland, 21401. I speak tonight on the behalf of the residents of... Thank you. I speak tonight on the behalf of the residents of public housing. HACCA Resident Advisory Board, HACCA staff, and as a HACCA board member. We all realize the many problems at the housing authority of the city of Annapolis, HACCA. We realize that Rome was not built in a day. We also realize that many HACCA issues will be long-term in correcting. Beverly Wilburn, Executive Director at HACCA, inherited a mountain of issues. One of Beverly's main concerns is to gain the trust from the residents of public housing. In conversations with her, she has gained the respect of the residents. Another concern of hers is to do things the correct way, the way that is supposed to be done, keeping residents in mind. She has one-hundred-and-ten percent accomplished that. Residents feel they can trust her. Residents do and can easily talk with her of their issues, and she listens. The day-to-day operations at HACCA staff works well with her. They are willing to go the extra mile to get things done at HACCA. HUD requirements, some have been completed. The Rental Assistance Demonstration, known as RAD, R-A-D, program is now in progress. Any executive director has many responsibilities to focus on, and Beverly Wilburn is focusing on them, if she's allowed to do so. It is my hope and prayers, along with others, that Beverly Wilburn, Executive Director of the Annapolis Housing Authority of the city of Annapolis, will reconsider leaving HACCA. My final thought tonight is, let's ask ourselves, please, do we, do you, really, really, want the housing authority of the city of Annapolis to work for all? Thank you.
Ms. Chapman?
Sandra Chapman, I'm Chairman of the Board for the City of Annapolis Housing Authority. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Bring it down. Okay. I'm here tonight because it was brought to my attention that the Board of Commissioners held a vote to remove Ms. Wilburn, and I wanted to publicly set that record straight. The Board of Commissioners never held a meeting, nor did they have a vote to get rid of Ms. Wilburn. This is a rumor that is going around the communities all over the city, that again, the HACCA board is removing a director. We did not, and I want to repeat, we did not ask her to leave, nor do I know of what four board members they could be talking about that would even want her to leave this position. As a matter of fact, myself and another board member, Kimberly Cornet, have been working very hard to get Ms. Wilburn to stay, if not as the CEO, stay and help with the RAD process. The one thing that I will have to give Ms. Wilburn is, of all my twenty-some years being involved one way or another with public housing, I have never seen a director to gain the trust that she had from the residents. And regardless, that is a big thing, for residents to trust the executive director that's running the housing authority. I don't have to go into the things that Ms. Wilburn have accomplished in these six months, but like Ms. Wells said, one of the things that she have accomplished is her relationship with the residents. I would also like to say that the Board of Commissioners was appointed to do a job and clean up things that had been going on for many years. And we work very hard. It's more than a full-time job to try to accomplish what little things we have accomplished. We work more than most boards, and the things that have gone on is not our fault. It's like we inherited these problems. But we do everything we can, but it's some sources that appear that they don't want the housing authority to be functional. And every time we turn around, it's the outside forces that make things worse. And that's no different for Ms. Wilburn. In six months, she cannot eliminate the problems that have been growing... that have been growing for years and years. So, I just wanted to set the record straight publicly, that the Board did not ask Ms. Wilburn to leave. She had her reasons for leaving. And I think if anybody wanted to know, and they talked to her, they would find out. The last thing I would like to say is that we should not allow our personal differences and our personalities to stop the work that need to be done. And what's more important than anything that we have to remember is that we're there to serve the residents of public housing before anything else. Thank you for your time.
Sandra Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to thank you and Jackie both for coming and setting the record straight. I can tell you, when I heard the news, I was shocked and saddened. I've been watching the progress, and I think there is progress. And Beverly is a very strong individual, and I think it takes a strong individual-
Yes, it does.
-to do that job. And I had not heard anyone on the Board speak ill of her. And I think everyone that I've spoken to felt that she was essential to help us through this whole RAD program. So, I hope you're successful in convincing her to change her mind. And if I can be of help in any way, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Finn-Lason?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chapman. And I'm addressing my remarks to you as Chairman of the Board-
Okay.
...but to all of your residents who are in the audience this evening. I have not yet met with Ms. Wilburn. I know that she had a busy schedule, but I'm scheduled for Wednesday. But I did have the opportunity to hear her at the Caucus of African-American Leaders a couple of weeks ago. And there were probably 75 people in that room. And I think we were all completely enthralled in how dynamic, how committed, and how professional she is. I think everyone walked out of there thinking that HACAA's in good hands with her. So, I am very disappointed to hear what's going on now. I hope that the underlying rumors are not true, that she's being driven out. Do know, and Alderman Arnett has said it, and I and several others, if not all of us, stand with you, because it really is about making sure that our Housing Authority residents are taken care of. And if Mrs. Wilburn, who's at the, has hit the ground running, has the ideas and the skills and the desire to help, then we should do everything we can to make sure she can do just those things.
Thank you.
So, I'm with you. And when I meet with her on Wednesday, I will do my very best to convince her that we are with her and with all of you.
You know, I didn't want to repeat, because I didn't know what Ms. Wells was going to actually say. But I'm not sure whether I have stated or not, and I want people to understand this, when Ms. Wilburn was brought on to the Housing Authority, she was brought on under a six-month contract, which end the end of the month, with the option that if everything went all right, we would offer her another six months. And that's what I was hoping would happen, that she would at least give us another six months. Because it is very difficult to find an executive director, especially that want to come into a troubled Housing Authority. So, we were hoping for at least a year. As I stated, Ms. Wilburn have her reasons for not staying. All of them are not good, favorable for us. But it's very difficult, the position that we're in, okay? So, thank you very much for your support and allowing me to hopefully set some of the rumors straight.
Thank you for sharing with us.
Alderwoman Fennel Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to meet Ms. Wilburn back in April, when she had, when you all had your board meeting at Annapolis Gardens, which is in Ward Three. She started, I know, on May 1st. From the outset, I was very impressed. In the interim, I've had a chance to meet with her on two other occasions. I have been extraordinarily impressed with Mrs. Wilburn's acumen, her professionalism, and I'm not going to go down the adjectives that Alderwoman Finn-Lason, but I can ditto those. Very seldom do you find somebody who has everything necessary to meet the needs of a troubled Housing Authority. And we need Mrs. Wilburn desperately. Desperately, desperately. And when we find someone who has what we need, then we need to respect what she's providing to us. She doesn't have to do this. She's an attorney, she was at, she was in DC. She's had, I think, some interaction with Baltimore as well. This Housing Authority, for her, when you come from a large urban area like DC and Baltimore, I don't see any reason why she can't do the job. And so far in six months, I've seen a lot. I work in the West County end at Frank Hepburn-Harmon Elementary. Me Village is now going through the RAD program. So, I have a little bit of knowledge about it. But if Ms. Wilburn is doing the job, and everybody that I've heard is satisfied, I saw some folks recently, when this was first announced, and I saw nothing but tears from the residents, from the staff, and from Ms. Wilburn herself. That was a sad occasion. When everything comes together and aligns, then we need to respect that alignment. Thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Thank you.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a few dealings, although not face-to-face with Ms. Wilburn. As Ms. Parker knows, there've been some serious problems with the facilities at, well, you know too, at the Morris Blum Center, and she's been right on it. She even contacted me one time when she was out of town. The elevators had gone up, and only later did I find out that she was out of town okay, but she was out of town at a very close relative's funeral.
Her mother.
Yeah, her mother, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
And frankly, under those circumstances, I don't think most of us would have bothered contacting somebody like me about a problem like that. She did, she was right on it. Still don't have that particular problem totally solved, but it's, we're much better off because she's the one that's running the show, I can assure you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one, Alderman Arnett?
Thank you. I know this is about Beverly Wilburn, but since you and Commissioner Wells are here, I do want to say that, and I know the Mayor and Alderwoman Finn-Lason will second, we've been watching you two work very hard and seeing the progress we're making. And so, while you're here, I'd like to thank you also for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bishop Craig Coats, and then William Rowe?
Good evening. Craig Coats, 62 Harbor Heights Drive, Annapolis. This, that made my job really easy. I'm here because I'm a native, and I'm 24 years pastoring this community. Whenever there are concerns, issues, tragic moments in our community, I'm called upon to come and assist and address, and I'm happy to serve. I'm here because likewise, at hearing, my phone ringing constantly at hearing of the resignation of Ms. Wilburn, I became greatly concerned. I took it upon myself to schedule time to sit down with her as well. And I think with so much support from you, I say hats off for the support. But I can't help but sit there and say, with so many wonderful things, why would she resign with so many wonderful accolades and the work she's doing? What makes her feel like she does not want to continue? And I believe from my observation as well, is that she not only has vision, but she does have passion. And I believe if the city, if we, along with the residents, which we have numerous pages of signatures, people that want her to stay, along with our clergy and other leaders of this community, because I believe it takes all of us, I believe that we have to work together. Mr. Mayor, I remember when you were elected, we talked about One Annapolis. I think we all know, Annapolis has historically been called a town of two cities, one poor and one rich. And I believe that it's time that we put that to rest, and we really be one community. So much to the point that people would not necessarily call themselves living in public housing, but more so affordable housing. I believe that Ms. Wilburn has the ability, she has the expertise. And I believe that it's really imperative at this moment that we really encourage a working relationship between the Board and the executive director, a working relationship that is not tainted by ulterior motives or hidden agendas. I'm one who have the opportunity to oversee 11 pastors at a given time. And I've found that oftentimes, when a pastor wants to give up, it's because somewhere along the line, someone seems to think they have enough power to tie their hands. And I like to believe that here, that we all want the same thing, that we all want a director. As we all know, it's almost an embarrassment, because Annapolis has, that director's position has been a revolving door, five people, acting or acting directors or directors over four years. It's time that we really examine the relationship between the city and housing. So, I'm pledging my support, and I'm hoping likewise that you pledge your support to help us work with the council, the residents council, as well as hoping that we can get Ms. Wilburn to stay. I understand a committee's been formed to go search. I like to suggest that we put our efforts and energy into trying to convince her that we're all willing to work to resolve this versus going to look for somebody else for six months down the road to be at the same place again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for me?
My name is William Rowe. Can you hear me? Not that you probably want to hear me, but my name is William. And this, this particular public comment is directed towards the Mayor, not council persons. And this is in response to the statement that you made about Gavin Buckley sending his dogs. So, for me, I can't speak for Robert Eads, but I can speak for me, having never been paid by anyone in this city, really in this state. I took offense to that, and I just wanted to publicly say that to you, because I viewed it as an assassination of my character. Because what I wanted to say is, parents explain to their children why apologizing is important, and they acknowledge that they've offended someone, or they, in this case, I believe, however anyone else characterizes it, I believe that it was, you know, offensive, in particular, to African-American men who, though thorns in your side, and that might include all of you all, I believe that one of the reasons why we have some of the issues that we do, even when it comes to Housing Authority and the commission and comments about outsiders, is because community involves anyone who sees an opportunity to lend a hand where they feel that there is a gap. And so, when you make comments like that, in a lot of ways, whether you agree with me or not, whether anyone agrees with me, that's not why I'm here, or likes me. I'm here because I identify something as William that I feel I need to either elevate, advocate, or educate. And so, I just encourage you, this is not political or anything else, but I encourage you in the seat that you're in to be mindful of that, because when you look, as I always say every time I come and speak, if you look in the audience, there's a reason why your audience doesn't represent the population of this city, both socio-economically, as well as geographically, and definitely culturally. And part of that reason is because we should be able to democratically open doors that allow everyone to talk about subjects that are important to them. And I've been told a couple times by various people, don't say that, that's not the way you say it, you're offending people, people are getting mad at you. And I'm sorry that I'm, I won't say arrogant, but I certainly don't doubt my abilities in terms of being able to communicate things that are important. So, I stand here today asking for a public apology, to me, for the comments that not only appeared in the newspaper timely enough, but I felt that they were egregious.
So, I'm glad you came here and brought this up, so we can clear the air and set the record straight. When I talked with the reporter, I basically said that, you know, I don't think they're necessarily paid to come out, but it's worth mentioning that they're being paid by, not you, Mr. Eads was being paid by, and I never made the comment, "Call off the dogs." And if you read the report, I said, "People at home were making that comment." I see how it can be offensive, that's an old war term, in terms of telling people to back off a little bit, but I never made the comment, "Call off the dogs." So, therefore, I don't think I owe an apology for that. I certainly feel bad if it offended you in any way, comments people made out there. But you certainly should feel free, as anyone else, to come here and testify on whatever you would like. As elected officials, it's our job to listen, so.
Right, absolutely. And I accept what I believe to be an apology, which is why I started off, there's a little bit of method to my madness. And that's why I started off by using the analogy, Mr. Mayor, by using the analogy of parents and children. Because one thing we do teach our children is that a open-ended kind of political apology that says, "I apologize and I am sorry, but," or "I'm sorry if I offended you," it's rather loose to me, because I told you, this is William speaking. This isn't Gavin, this isn't Robert Eads, this isn't African-Americans. I'm saying to you, as William, that whether you said dogs or anything else that you said, by making the accusation and putting it into the public sphere, that I come to these meetings, which I believe any of you all can attest to, I've been here quite a bit, from the police recommendations to everything else. You know, it kind of undermines the idea of people coming up and exercising their, you know, their citizenship.
Thank you for your time.
So, I'm going to repeat, it didn't sound like you apologized to me.
I'm sorry if you felt offended by the comments that I said, "You might be doing this on behalf of Gavin Buckley. If that offended you, I apologize." We have to now move on to the next speakers.
What you said was?
Mr. Rowe, please.
I know, hold on.
I gave you, you've had more than five minutes of time. I'd like to move on to some other people in the audience who are waiting to come forward and testify.
So, the question I have for you is, so that we're clear, because this is televised.
Sure.
You said that they are being paid, which included me.
And you are not being paid, that's correct.
So, do you apologize for saying that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Jonathan Hodgson. I live at 5 Stephen Point, Annapolis, Maryland. And I'm here only to urge you to vote favorably on an item that's on the agenda, O-2617, which is the bill to adjust the process for approving a zoning district boundary line adjustment. I would suggest to you that it's a minor adjustment, but an important one. It doesn't change the fact that the decision to grant the adjustment remains in the hands of the Board of Appeals. The only change is to allow someone in my position with my property to ask for an adjustment that would be appropriate, and to, again, ask the discretion of the Board of Appeals. So, it's on the agenda tonight. I thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
How are you doing? How are you doing? My name's Adetola Jai, 2146 Marbury Hill Road. On October 23rd, you said, I quote, "The thing about saying if a kid had an after-school program, then they wouldn't commit crime." I don't know if I buy that. It might make them less likely. Do you remember on February 10th, saying that the lessons I learned from playing sports as a child have guided me throughout my professional life, man?
Good question.
Oh, I said, "Do you remember saying on February 10th, that lessons I learned as a child, lessons I learned from playing sports as a child have guided me throughout my professional life?"
I'm sure I made those comments. I played many sports growing up, from lacrosse, wrestling, basketball, soccer.
Do you believe that a kid had, if a kid has an after-school program, that they wouldn't commit a crime?
I think what you're going to with the article in the newspaper about the differences in policing, and one of the things we've had is a comprehensive approach. Yes, we've added 10 new officers, yes, we've added security cameras, and we've also switched to a community policing model, building relationships. What I said in those comments were, after-school programs are important, but for someone to say, "If there's an after-school program, we wouldn't have had 10 homicides," that's what I was saying, I don't buy it.
What's the city's investment in after-school programs?
I don't know if the Rec Park Director's here, but we do have a number of after-school programs for kids.
Now, I'm saying, do you know what the investment is specifically in public housing?
In public housing youth programs? Off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
Are you concerned about that? Because you know how much money is spent on policing.
Yes.
Do you see an inadequacy in that?
One of the comments that I made frequently is that the city's cut rec programs, and we're wondering why crime occurs in the communities. The city hasn't cut any rec programs. The Housing Authority has, the school system has, but not the city of Annapolis. So we've actually added.
As FUD's cutting off funding to HUD, where's the city going to fill the gap, especially with this new partnership with RAG coming?
I think we've done a number of things, but is it the city's responsibility to fill every gap from the federal government? I think they need to lean on some other states.
Well, I'm saying for residents of housing.
For the residents of what?
Of Housing Authority. What do you plan to do to fill the gap?
There's a number of things we've done to help fill the gap between it. Just in Recreation, we built them in Newtown, a basketball court in Newtown 20, never charged them, they've never paid money for the inspections that they've had, they've done other things to help close the gap.
Who's in charge of all the fixing inspection?
Who's in charge of what?
Fixing the things that came through inspection.
The Housing Authority, the same way in the other inspection, the person who owns the property would be responsible for it.
Okay, and the last thing is, do you remember a video in January where you said that you were going to push all criminals out of city limits?
I'm sure I said something like that.
You said you had an action plan, so is that action plan still coming through?
We're working on it hard every day. It's not easy. I think you talked.
Why did you do a second chance job fair?
Excuse me, sir, I wasn't done.
Okay.
You talk to any police officer outside, you talk to anybody in the community, it's something you're never going to solve. It's not like you're ever going to wake up one day, and you're never going to have people that are in poverty, or there's not hunger, or there's not someone looking for a job. It's a consistent thing, you work out hard every single day, that's what my administration's done. We can't lose the fight, and we're not going to. But to sit up here and say, "Because all crime's not solved," that somehow broke my word.
No, no, I'm saying, you said you're going to push all criminals out of city limits. Well, you did a job fair a couple weeks ago, and that seems a little contradicting in your action plan.
So I think what you're referring to, I have a little bit of time left, is a second chance job fair. I've been fortunate with the jobs I've had over my life. I've tried to bring a lot of job fairs to the city. We've worked with our maritime industry, over 3,000 people work in that, and they're dying for people to work. Worked with Audenwood Pendel Charles, we've had job fairs for the Energy Park with Maryland Live Casino. One of the areas I saw was for people that had a criminal record that couldn't get another job. You know, unfortunately, I'm appointed on the Workforce Development Board, Governor appointed me to work on the Cyber Security Task Force. But what about people that have a previous record? We teamed up with 10 private sector employees that were willing to give people a second chance. I don't think they are criminals. I think once you've served your time, you deserve a second chance. So to say that I went out of my way to find 10 private sector employees to give people a second chance on bringing criminals back in the city, I don't buy it. I think they do deserve a second chance, and we're going to do another one of those in the Springs to give people jobs, because the best solution to people committing crimes is a good-paying job.
So you didn't mean what you said on the video about pushing criminals out of city limits?
I think you're misinterpreting what I was saying. What I was saying is, we're going to push out the drug dealers and people actively committing a crime. Once someone's paid their debt to society, I think they have every right to come, work here, and make their life better.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Lyon, 34 Lafayette. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm part of the New Market Group, and I understand you may take a vote to kick this down the road yet another year. It's kind of disheartening for us, and Mr. Blonder as well. Having spoken to Harvey, he has virtually no interest in treading water for another year. He wants to see a five-year lease with a five-year option, as does our group. And it just, I understand it's a tough decision for you all to make, but you can make it now, or you can make it a year from now, and nothing really is going to change. Three or four of you probably won't be here next year, so you don't have to make a decision, and it's, you know, no blood on your hands. But you got into politics to make tough decisions. This one, I don't know if it seems tough to you or not, but it's just like, make a choice. The people want to see change, Harvey wants to change it, we want to change it, it's in your lap, and you're doing nothing about it. You know, a vote for this virtually ensures that New Market won't be around next year, and I doubt Harvey will either. And it makes the question, why would another group come in here to do an RFP, seeing how the process goes? You know, Trader Joe's, Dean &amp; DeLuca, you know, they can read this stuff, and they'll see like, why would we go into Annapolis? It's not business-friendly. You've got people that live in this community who want this, you've got people, us, I live up the street, I'm willing to work here and do this and make it happen. Why can't we get a vote in the timeframe that you set up? And it's just appalling and disheartening to see it possibly put off yet another year. And having talked to Harvey, he might, you know, Harvey's a strong-willed man, he could just pull out, and then we've got the market empty for another year, it's just dark. And then people come downtown, they're like, "What's up with that historic building? It's dark, there's nothing going on." I would hate to see that happen on your watch. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Order minute.
I think you might misunderstand the intent of the legislation that's up tonight. It is to provide the city a safeguard in case we don't come to a successful negotiation on the contracts by the end of the year. At lunchtime, many of us spoke with the city manager, and frankly, he's optimistic that we can get the negotiations with both vendors done fairly quickly. From that point, though, we still, according to the processes, have to have an ordinance that the council would vote on that would include the new lease for approval. So I actually am quite pleased that things are moving forward as quickly as they are. I know your circumstances, and I can understand how you might be feeling a great deal of angst, but I don't think the administration or the council are dragging their feet, and I'm encouraged that they're moving ahead with good pace. I think, Mr. Andrews, you told us there's a couple of meetings coming up this week to get into the negotiations. We hope we can come up with very quickly one or more successful leases that will come to the council in the form of an ordinance, that we can, that the next council, and you're right, many will not be here, but right after the first of the year, the next council can vote on. So, again, I appreciate the anxiety, and I appreciate that it doesn't look like much is happening, but particularly by government standards, I think we're moving along with a lot of speed, and I hope you'll take some encouragement from that.
I hope that's truthful, but it just seems, on both sides, it just feels like you're setting us up for a year delay, otherwise this wouldn't be in discussion.
We're definitely not trying to do that.
I hope so. It doesn't do you any good, and it doesn't do me any good, and it doesn't do the citizens of Annapolis any good.
Right. The last thing this council or the next one wants is an empty market house on their hands, so we are definitely.
I accept what you're saying in good faith, and I hope it's the truth. You know, we were already supposed to have this wrapped up, whether it was Harvey's group or our group, by now, with, you know, with the RFP. You guys set the parameters up, we followed them, but no one can wait another year, in all honesty. It's just not economically viable for our group to tread water this long. You know, we've got lives, you have lives, everybody has lives. We'd like to just move forward and do something positive for the city.
We hear your message.
All right, thank you very much for your time and your patience.
Is there anyone else?
Yes. Sorry, we have to go on. Over here, over here, over here. Do we have to say our names first, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mary Byro. Sylvia Gilmer. Okay, give me one. I couldn't get my printer to work, so I apologize, I have to go off of this, which I suppose is a sign of the times, this is what we do. Pam Munson, a friend of mine, once told me how thankful she was her uncle had encouraged her to get educated in civics. And this is a small matter of legal or illegal campaign signs on what I believe is church property, and what I think might also be city property, I'm not sure. My friend Sylvia and I went to church yesterday on West Washington, and we saw the brick building on the corner of Clay and West Washington Street. It had several political signs on it, and I was a little irritated, because I don't think the members put it up, I think somebody else might have put the signs there, I'm not sure, but I just want to find out how this works. I took pictures of it, and because prior to the primaries, I had seen both Gavin Buckley's signs up there and John Astle's. I thought, well, I doubt the church members did that, because those were two people who were going against each other. So anyway, we got out of church, and then the signs were gone, weren't they? The signs were gone, I was kind of happy. And I went to Stanton Center or in that area again today, and yet these signs were up yet again. And I think that it's likely somebody's putting them up without authorization, and I just wondered, and then also, there was another sign for somebody who's running for mayor, who is a business owner in town, I'm not going to say who, but there was a sign across the street from that brick building on the corner, and there was a big sign for that person right in front of the telephone pole, which I think is also maybe not legal, I think maybe that's city property or something, so I pulled the sign up. I need to know if I broke the law by doing that, you know, if I need to, if I need, cool. And so I, look at my.
Right now.
Okay. Mary Byro. Byro, B-I-R-O. I have it in my husband's car, I need to know if I need to.
I have this up on my shirt.
Anyway, thank you, sir. Yeah, I got this, we got these T-shirts made up this morning, $30 apiece, anybody can get them if they want to. Customs made at a new business in Annapolis. Anyway, we pulled this, I pulled the sign up, I've got a picture of me pulling the sign up, so I'll admit to the crime. I need to know if I need to return the sign, if I have to go to the police department, if I broke some law, if somebody who put the sign up broke a law. I would just like to know, because this sign is definitely not art, and I love art. I love art.
Well, maybe I can help you on some of this before we go further. So on private property, people are allowed to put up whatever signs they want, and the city doesn't enforce it. So whether it's a church, a house, an apartment, a business, that's up to the individual property owner to determine.
So the church, if the church decides to do it, they can do it?
Any private entity can do it. Light poles, you cannot put signs on, and if that comes up again, you can contact my office or Peacock Woods and Planning and Zoning. They can have them removed, no matter who it is, the election board, it happens from time to time, especially right before the election. But I wouldn't personally take down the sign, I would just contact the city, and they can have it removed if it's on a light pole.
So I should use city resources to take up illegal signs? Okay, all right. I know the city has a lot of extra time to take up illegal campaign signs. No, in front of, he just said, the mayor just said, that in front of the telephone pole, it's illegal. Isn't that correct, right in front of the telephone pole?
Yes, because that's owned by the city government and DGN.
Okay, so that is in fact illegal. Thank you for the clarification, I have photos of the signs and who put them up. I don't know who put them up, I don't know if because it's in a poor neighborhood, we don't have to pay attention to the laws, or we don't care what art goes up in the poor neighborhood, but I think we deserve to have the poorer neighborhoods, excuse me. I'm just letting people, I care about poor neighborhoods, ma'am, that's why I'm up here.
Everybody try to calm down.
Thank you. Thank you, I mean, I have photographs if anybody wants to see, and I will. I will check with the church and see if they've endorsed those particular campaigns. Photographs, I know the pastor quite well there.
Is there anyone else who'd like to testify? Seeing no motion, I declare comments by the general public closed. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
Right. We've had a pretty busy month so far, I'm going to run through a quick update, run through a quick update of some things that have happened. One of the things I'm very proud of is our fire department became a Class 1, as many of you know. Part of the reason they became a Class 1 fire department is going door-to-door, checking on smoke detectors for residents, making sure everybody had a working smoke detector. They actually completed knocking on more than 10,000 doors, and they gave out more than 600 free smoke alarms and 200 free CO2 alarms. I've gone with them to do it, you knock on doors, if they need a battery, they give it to them, if they need a new system, they do. There's no taxpayer money involved in this, it's funded through a grant. We also had the Hispanic Heritage Festival on Sunday, October the 15th, I was proud to go down there and celebrate. The heritage, meeting a number of people, it was a great time. Also, the Annapolis Police Department is having an upcoming fundraiser for the Howland Hustle to benefit the Special Olympics, that's on Saturday, September the 28th. It's a 5K walk/run, so if you can't run, you can still walk it, and I believe it helps fund the Special Olympics, which has more than 7,000 individuals that participate in it. And that includes my update from the mayor. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is appointments, beginning with AP 2417, the appointment of Corey Johnson to the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment? Is there a second? Let me just say real quick, I want to thank people on the board, and the people that have taken time to talk to Mr. Johnson. He's a longtime Annapolis resident, you know, everybody has a copy of his resume, I think he's going to do a thorough job, particularly for the Housing Authority, bringing that security aspect to it with his background. For those of you who don't know, he's the lead security officer for the town of Howland Beach, which has asset values of over a billion dollars. He's also maintained places in Washington DC, he's overseen particularly the Weston and Georgetown, he's their Director of Safety and Security. Try to choose each board member carefully, that brings their own unique skill set. I think his ability, growing up here, being from here, particularly understanding the dynamics of crime and security, he'll be a great addition to the team. And I want to thank him, and Ms. Wells, and Ms. Chatlin, everyone for serving, you know. Boards and commissions are not paid, particularly the Housing Authority Board, the hours they put in, it pretty much is a full-time job, so I want to thank everybody for their service. And with that, is there any discussion? Order one, Pendo Charles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as part of the committee that interviewed Mr. Johnson, I also want to add that in addition to his credentials on paper, we were especially impressed that he has been serving that community at the Stanton Center for a number of years. And so he's not only professionally qualified, but he's emotionally involved in the community that he's going to be serving on the board of, and I think that's especially important and valuable in this environment.
Thank you. Order one, Pendo Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate and kind of, I guess, bring it back to the table, and we talked about security and community policing and all that, and at the last city council meeting, I think I gave a pretty succinct listing. of the things that we were doing in the community besides community policing. And the word holistic approach is what we're trying to do. Like, like Ms. Jackie said, this, this didn't happen overnight, it's going to take time to fix it. We don't have a magic or silver bullet. But we do have things that we are doing besides the community policing. And I want to emphasize that because I don't think maybe it was quite clear the last time, Mr. Ral and I got into a discussion about it. But what I'm trying to say is, there are more things happening than just the law enforcement end of it. We've got a lot of other programs going on, and if you want to know more about it, you can email me and I will email you the information. As I also stated, I may be the person who initiated it, but it's a team effort. Can't do it by myself, need, need, need the support of these people sitting up at this dais, need your support as well, but we're going to keep moving forward and we're going to get it done. So I don't want anything misinterpreted. Yes, we've got more police, yes, we're spending money on police, but we're spending money on relationships, unprecedented relationships, that we've never had before in the past. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include journals of proceedings, CCM 092517, special meeting minutes, CCM 100917, regular meeting minutes. The second reader for 04417, exempt service economic development manager. And that's the end of the consent calendar items.
Is there any council member who would like to have something removed? Order one, Feliciano?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for us to remove 04417 from the consent calendar first.
Is there anything else?
04417.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll? Aye.
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 The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is public hearings continued, beginning with ordinance 03517, revisions to development review.
We have three people signed up to speak this evening, Robert Waldman, Jackie Wells, and Adolfo. And I apologize, I don't want to butcher the last name because I've had that done to me before. As always, you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Waldman, I live at 1001 Poplar Avenue in the city of Annapolis. I'm a member of the Planning Commission in Annapolis for many more years than I can count. It says green, so I'm talking, right?
Have to speak up?
I have to talk to that person in the last row of the auditorium, huh? All right. I am not, many of you know that I've served on this planning commission for many, many years, and I take it, it's dear to my heart, because I think it's such an important, serves such an important function in the city. And I'll elucidate that in my comments. But I'm not here speaking for the commission, I'm really speaking solely for myself, because the commission didn't decide that somebody was deputized to speak for them. I also am the chairman of a community association, so I have some, also some familiarity with the pressures of development and what communities want to see from the city in the development process, which this bill affects very importantly. So, I have, I think, as an introduction, I think that this bill corrects a mistake that was made four years ago, more than four years ago, in the Cohen administration, when major site designs were stripped from the authority or the docket, or the purview of the Planning Commission. For decades before then, planned developments and major site designs had gone before the Planning Commission. And then issues such as special exceptions and variances and more legalistic kinds of, more circumscribed kinds of issues go to the Board of Appeals. And one of the things that happened in the Cohen administration is it made certain decisions of the Planning Commission final judgments from which people would appeal directly to the Circuit Court, and it made the decisions that the Board of Appeals made also appealable directly to the Circuit Court. But in the course of that, it stripped major site designs from the Planning Commission and placed them to the Board of Appeals. Now, the Board of Appeals docket, the way the Board of Appeals functions is quite different from the way the Planning Commission functions. The Board of Appeals functions on more concise case, not case-centric, but more concise matters. It has a much busier docket, it does not have the time that the Planning Commission has to really look at some of these larger developments. And so things go more or less according to how staff recommends, because they simply don't have the time to really check into what's in the plans of some of these major issues. The Planning Commission, on the other hand, has all the time in the world to do that, and has been doing that for decades. Major site designs are as important as planned developments. And we should look at those things. And what I have found over 20, almost 22, 23 years of being on this commission is that when citizens look at things, they're often, the more eyes that see something, the better the project will be. We're not in the business of obstructing, we're not in the business of stymying developers, we're not in the business of extending their timelines, we're in the business of making things better. And when citizens take a look at things, the projects get better. And when citizens look at things, citizens are involved then in their own government. And so the Planning Commission serves an incredibly important purpose, which is to accept and involve and welcome and encourage the involvement of citizens in this city, of whom there are many who are incredibly intelligent and have a lot to offer. So it's a pressure valve, as well as providing positive contributions. So, number one, the public review of major projects is incredibly important. And it's one of the things that distinguishes the city of Annapolis. Returning major site designs would give the Planning Commission and the developers and the citizens the opportunities to look at these major issues. Another aspect of the bill that's just before you has to do with public meetings.
I have to ask you to summarize, please.
The public meeting component is not onerous, the good developers already do it. The good developers prosper by doing it.
Orderment, Tanan, have a question?
Thank you, thank you for your thorough, thorough analysis.
Truncated, but still thorough.
Well, you did pretty well for a public defender, I have to admit.
Well, that's because we have a harder job than those guys are just saying what happened next.
This appears to basically add another level at the, at the beginning, at the very beginning of the process. And let me make sure I understand that, that we're on the same page. And that that would involve basically, at least in general terms, outlining the project as the developer feels it will turn out to be. Is that your understanding also?
You mean to have a public meeting?
Yeah, I mean, with the, with the rest, people that live nearby, plus presumably anybody else who felt interested and wanted to attend, is that your understanding also?
Yes, it's like one meeting, it's not, it's no major issue, and like I said, the good developers already do this.
Okay, thank you.
Now, just in terms of answering some other questions and some things that have come up with respect to the public meeting, the Planning Commission suggested, in terms of grandfathering projects that are already in the pipeline, that we require them, major site designs we're talking about, we require them to have a hearing, but those, those projects that are already in the pipeline, if the director feels that they have satisfied the intent of the, of the legislation, he can, he can give a directorial exemption from having yet another meeting, not necessary. But that's just for stuff in the pipeline, and our findings were not written clearly on that. But it's not an onerous requirement.
Is there any requirement of approval or anything like that, or is it simply a presentation?
Simply a presentation.
Thank you.
Orderment, Arnett?
Were there any other comments you wanted to make?
Well, and I'll be brief, because, I, I'll be brief. There's been another objection placed, I've heard that this will extend the timeline for, for projects and for applications. I don't think that it will. At this point, the Planning Commission has a very low docket, and we, we didn't even have an October meeting. And we're prepared to meet twice a month if we need to. So I don't think this is going to, this is going to slow things down more than 30, 60 days at the maximum. The good developers already welcome this kind of a process. I think this is a mistake that needs to be corrected, and I think that this legislation is a good, good step in that, towards that correction. Thank you for your time.
Orderment, Lutner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you comment on whether the language as it exists, even with the amendments, would still be vague as to the notice requirements and the burden that applicants would have on meeting the notice requirements when they don't really have a list of what community groups or how to reach tenants and so on?
I, I haven't seen the amendments, I just heard tonight, or today, that there are in fact amendments. The discussion before the Planning Commission did not, focused on lots of other things, but did not focus on that specifics. I think that that's a technical issue, a mechanical issue, I think that that can be clarified through amendments in committee. We already have notice requirements, there are already notice requirements for any application as, you know, was it neighbors within 200 feet or something of that sort. And those lists and that material is already available, and I would think that this would just replicate that or duplicate that.
Your comments about technical problems that we worked on in committee in a normal situation would make sense, except we don't have any time left, this is our last meeting. So there's no time left for committees and then come back for another council meeting.
I can't comment on, I can't comment on those specifics.
Fair enough.
Unfortunately, I have to leave it in your laps.
Hello, my name is Jackie Wells, 201 Severn Avenue, Eastport 21403. And yes, I'm the second Jackie Wells who's appearing here tonight, just in case anybody's confused. There are two of us in Annapolis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of 03517 and to urge the council to vote in favor of the proposed ordinance. This piece of legislation is a great example of a grassroots effort by Annapolis residents to improve their city's code for the betterment of both residents and developers and the community as a whole. As background, this legislation results directly from what I call lessons learned about the city's current review process for large project development. Those lessons have pointed to the need for a better, more transparent review process so that what is approved is compliant with the city code and good for the community in which the development is proposed. Wards 8, 6, and 5 in Eastport have been the target of many large infill projects, despite not being a growth area in the city's 2009 comprehensive plan. Just within Hilltop Lane and Tyler Avenue and bounded by water on three sides with only two roots off the peninsula, eight large infill projects have been approved, are pending approval, or are in the conceptual phase for the Eastport Peninsula. These eight projects would bring 836 residences and additional commercial retail or maritime space, along with associated infrastructure issues, such as traffic, parking, schools, environmental issues, and the like. That number does not include the needed redevelopment of the hackup properties for affordable housing. The city's Planning and Zoning Department previously testified that an additional 800 residences would bring Eastport's traffic to a critical stage. And again, the number that I just mentioned that's already been approved or is in the pipeline is 836. Some who live on the peninsula would say that Eastport is already close to that critical stage. Wards 7, 3, and 2 are also targeted for similar development with proposed large infill projects. All of this development is being done without regard to the 2009 comprehensive plan and with little input by affected residents. While one architect has voluntarily sought community input for a project that he, or several projects that he has brought forward, large infill developments have been approved by the city without the surrounding community's awareness. For those residents who try to get involved, the behind closed doors negotiation process between the city and developers excludes them until far into the planning process. As a result, developers are faced with community input and objections late in their planning process, and after large amounts of funds have been expended by the developers. Concerned residents often lack the funds to challenge developers. Gridlock and legal challenges result creating discord all around. Responsible development opportunities slip away and potential jobs are missed. Based on the experiences that Eastport has observed over the last 10-plus years, the Eastport Civic Association's Architecture and Zoning Committee developed an outline of improvements that could be made to the large project development process. The ECA Board endorsed the proposed process improvements. The Aldermen for Ward 1 and Ward 8 co-sponsored legislation encompassing the proposed process improvements. Even though we've been working on these improvements for over a year, it is my understanding that some city leadership, some developers, and some council members want to defeat this legislation until after the elections. This is true even though attempts have been made to gain extra time or to correct any issues in the proposed legislation. It's also my understanding that the co-sponsors are tonight offering amendments to clarify and strengthen the ordinance. As you heard previously, the Planning Commission supports the legislation. Since this effort comes from and benefits the residents of Annapolis, your constituents who will soon be voting, I ask any council member who opposes this proposed legislation to explain your objection so that the council can determine if a compromise can be reached. And if no compromise can be reached, your constituents need to be clear on your position when we vote in three weeks. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to talk on this issue?
My name's Leo Wilson, I'm an architect here in town with Hammond Wilson Architects, and I live in Eastport at 109 Chesapeake Avenue. And I think I might be the architect that Jackie was speaking about. So, I testified on this matter before and gave you a couple of my concerns, and I wanted to speak again, not to repeat what I told you, but to let you know I've read through the amendments offered by the sponsors and didn't see the items I was concerned about addressed. The major one for me is that when you talk about a major site design plan review, the definition is pretty broad. It's any project that has a 20% change to the square footage of the building or 20% increase in the parking. If we think about where that net lands, it's pretty, it's pretty broad. I'm not saying that I'm against the idea of providing community input, and I think it's a great thing. And we spend a lot of time doing it, and I think it gives us better projects. But the Director of Planning and Zoning already has the ability to ask for this meeting whenever he feels it's appropriate to have it. And one of the things we all struggle with is the overreach of public review. I don't mind if you want to look at the work, I'm happy to share it with you, but all of a sudden, I'm going to say, you know, that percentage of projects that have to come before the Planning Commission gets before the Planning Commission gets quite a bit longer than it needs to be. I don't think every project that has a 20% increase in the floor area or a 20% increase in the parking ought to be in front of the Planning Commission. It's just not the right use of that body. These people are volunteers, and I know that Mr. Waldman said that he'd be happy to do it, but I'm not sure he'd be so excited once he realizes how many he has to do. So I think the legislation has a place, and I think it's a good thing for us to consider. And I think this public review is a big part of making Annapolis a better place to live and succeed. But I ask that we not rush into this. We're always asked to make sure we look at these things carefully, and I don't think it's right to push this to a vote tonight. I don't think you have the information in the legislation that reflects the concerns of the development community, and I don't think you're serving the best interests of the citizens of Annapolis if you rush this through. So I'm happy to work with anyone who wants to discuss how we could improve it, and I can provide written comments similar to those from Mr. Hyatt. And I'm happy to be part of a solution that gets us to a better outcome. Thank you.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you. I guess I'm thinking of this more in terms of having a tract developed rather than an individual property, although I understand that to some extent it does apply to individual properties too. I, I guess what I don't understand is, other than maybe a few weeks or a month or two of, of delay before a project is actually filed with planning and zoning, what, what is the objection? I mean, Mr. Waldman's indicated that so many good developers already do this, and you've indicated, I mean, I know people you work for have done, have done this fairly regularly. I, I'm faced with a project in my ward that an entire community is up in arms about, and perhaps understandably so, yet we don't really know much about what exactly is planned other than one part of the plan. I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't get it. It seems like it's to everybody's advantage. I mean, there is a delay, there's no question, but I don't think it's a, we're talking about a huge amount of time. A developer, it seems to me it's to everybody's benefit for them to get some, be required to get some community input. I mean, once they dodge the rotten tomatoes and rotten eggs and a few other things from the community, you submit it then, along with hopefully some things that the community, they and the community agree, agree on, and maybe the process would be, would be faster if they do this first.
So I think we agree on most points.
I'm playing the devil's advocate.
No, I understand, I understand. I think we agree on the importance of public input for, for most projects that are of size. The devil's in the details, you know? Not every project that is covered by this legislation ought to be in front of the Planning Commission. There's many that would be well below what we would cause community concern that are caught in this net. That's a big problem. And I don't want to, I don't think you should underestimate the complexity. And Mr. Waldman does a great job with the work he does on the Planning Commission, and I feel like we get a fair hearing. But at the same time, he doesn't control the schedule. The schedule's controlled by the workload at Planning and Zoning, and they have to write a staff report for each one of these things and review the work and have a pre-meeting. And he's one of about ten cogs that go into getting through that process. So, you know, again, I understand his position that they're happy to do it, but as a person on the other side, I can tell you I've been at this for a while, and it's never as fast as you'd like it to be, never.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Arnett? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wilson, I think we agree wholeheartedly that one of the imperfections in the code is the definition of major site design. And I can tell you that Alderman Budge and I struggled with that. I think the staff also grappled with this. They so testified before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission struggled with it as well. And I think that there are some refinements that can be done in the next term to come to grips with that. I don't think anyone is interested in needless delay or additional effort and expense, but I can tell you that, and I was very impressed with the testimony by Mr. Gutwold about grappling with this major versus minor. And minor itself isn't defined, it's just designated as anything that isn't major. So there's really only one definition. And I can assure you that that's something that we all want to work with. However, I would say a mitigating possibility here is for those things that are classified as major but really aren't, I think those things will fly through the process. I don't think anybody is interested in getting into a huge investment on something that is pretty straightforward. I, I do agree, though, that our next step, should we pass this legislation, is to come to grips. I, I don't understand why only two categories. You know, I could certainly think of three at least. And the intent is only for the major categories, the categories where citizens wake up and say, oh, my God, what is that and how did that get approved and nobody ever told me about it? You get hit with that, I get hit with that. And I get hit with it in the form of, how could you have let that happen? You're supposed to represent my interests. So the underlying effort in this legislation is to try to get all residents who are willing involved early on, when there's no question that nothing has been done with the planning staff. This is all independent of the planning staff at concept. I do think we can have the planning staff help set up who all should be contacted in the community, because they know. But I, I think the attempt is so that we can say, gosh, we even had a public hearing, it was held in Mount Olive, it was held wherever it was, and there's a record of it, so even if you couldn't make it, you would be able to look at that record and see what this concept is that is on the horizon. It's not most of the way through the process. It's on the horizon, and you had an opportunity to be aware of this and had an opportunity to weigh in. So that's, that's really the underlying intent. The other intent, to be sure, is, is my feeling, if it's major, if it's designated as major, it's major. And the community ought to be involved in things that are going to be major changes in their community. And I don't think we disagree on that, and I think you are one of the practitioners that has gone out of your way to let people know, and I've hosted town hall meetings where you've let people know, and we've had meetings over in the old Fossett Building where you let people know. So I think what we want to make sure is that everybody's operating on the same ground rules. And I believe if we find that this becomes onerous, you will let us know, and we, if we're good public servants, will do our best to, to fix it. But right now, I think everything is tilted all in one direction. So that's my question.
So, so I'll respond to that. Again, you know, we're singing from the same sheet of music. I think everyone agrees that the input process is important. I wouldn't underestimate the difficulty of getting a positive vote to change this again at some point in the future. I'd far prefer to get it right now than come back and fix it later. I did describe the problem with the, with the square footage and the limitation, and I agree, we could probably find some other definition expansions that would work there. But one of the things that it says that we need to do is not only conduct a public meeting, but to meet community concerns and then submit a comprehensive application for a Planning Commission public hearing regardless of the scope of the project. Now, what does that mean? Address community concerns, because sometimes the community concerns, I'll risk saying this, are without merit. And, and just because it comes up as a concern doesn't necessarily mean it's a problem from a planning standpoint. The cars will be too, there'll be too many cars. Maybe that's true, maybe that's not true. But just because I've made the complaint doesn't mean I shouldn't have as many cars. So that's the kind of language that's in here right now, and it's the type of thing that causes great concern from my side. So, as I said, happy to work through it, but, but those are the things, and I don't think it's a good idea to wait to solve it till after we invoke it and then have to fix it.
Alderwoman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Pendell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I'm going to pick up on what Alderman Arnett said about major and minor. And I'm looking back at my notes from the Rules and City Government Committee meeting that we had last week. No one is more concerned about the public being involved in these types of processes than I am, because our but, Ward three, a but, and on the counter, which we have no control over. And I've said that once, and I'll keep singing it until the cows come home. But anyway, I'm looking at my notes and, and some of what I'm, so from the, from the one hand, yes, I'm all for having the community involved in the process. On the flip side, Mr. Gutwold came before us last week, and part of the problem is when we look at legislation, how wide do we cast the net as far as who gets notified and who doesn't? Now, depending on how wide we cast the net, it's going to be dependent on how many resources we need. Do we have the proper resources in our planning and zoning department to handle whoever gets notification? Is it 30 feet, 50 feet, 100 feet, 200? I don't, I mean, I'm just throwing numbers out. Maybe in some neighborhoods, 500 feet may be adequate, in some it may be 1,000. I don't know. When we start looking at all of those concerns, then we've got some issues that we need to grapple with, I guess with this legislation. Who gives the notice? Does the developer give the notice? Does the developer determine? Do, does planning and zoning determine? If so, is it 50 people? Is it 500 people? I, I'm looking at, at the, the internal portion of all of this and how it affects. Got no problem with the intent of, of the legislation, but how do we implement it and what do we need to get there? And that is what I wrestled with when it became, when it came before the Rules and City Government Committee last week. I don't know if Mr. Gutwold wants to add anything to it, but, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but I will not do that tonight. But anyway, so, so we, the, the intent is great, I'm all for it, but how do we implement it? And we go back to the devil's in the details.
Alderwoman?
Thank you. I note Alderwoman Pendell Charles' concerns, and I will save commenting on that till we get to deliberating on the legislation, so we don't burn up too much of the witnesses' time. The, I just wanted to address quickly one point that you raised, which is the legislation says that the developer needs to address the concerns that were, that are raised by the community. Address doesn't mean fix. Address means acknowledge, and here's why I agree, disagree, and here, and/or here's what I'm going to do about it. It means you address them, it doesn't mean you have to solve them all in one spot, because some of them are going to be conflicting and can't be, you know, some of them are going to be mutually exclusive.
So I agree, and I appreciate the explanation, and the question then becomes, who decides which ones get addressed and which don't?
The developer does. In, in, in the developer's application, and then it's up to the planning staff and the Planning Commission to figure out if they've been addressed adequately.
Not dissimilar from what we go through today.
Exactly, that's the point.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public?
Mr. Passco, not so fast.
Yes, sir.
What do you think the notice requirements ought to be? There seems to be some confusion as to who ought to be notified and, and, and when. I mean, in my ward, I have 610 residences in Admiral Heights, and that's only maybe a quarter of my ward.
Right, well, I, one thing I do know is 200.
Makes a determination.
Well, I, one, one thing I do know is 200 feet isn't enough for a major project that's going on that's going to affect thousands of people. I mean, that's, that's too low right there. And then as far as, as notifications go, I would, you know, I would leave it up to each alderperson to tell who, who are the important groups in the neighborhood. For example, in Ward eight, we have projects going on, the ECA's been very involved, and the developers have been, actually have come to a lot of our meetings, but have they gone to the meetings at public housing and the, and the residents council meetings over there in Ward eight? No. So, and those people are impacted just like everyone else. So it's, but Ross would have said, well, I think you need to talk to Andre Atkins over at Eastport Terrace, because he lives in the neighborhood too. So I think it's up to the ward people to make those determinations.
Alderman Arnett?
But just to amplify, instead of making the developer go to each individual in each little cluster, the notion here is to have the developer, and I think they can get lots of help, both from the alderpersons but also the staff, the staff, believe me, know who all of the interest groups are. Have it at one time. You don't have to make a pilgrimage over to see Andre or then over to see Beverly Wilbour. We have one hearing. It's given notice. So it's already in the code that people within 200 feet, and what we're adding is all of the other interest groups in the area that we know will want to be involved and will be able to get their membership involved. And I, you know, I don't think there's going to be a big mystery, and I really don't think either the developer or the staff will have a hard time coming up with a list of people to notify. Notification is always on, is incumbent on the applicant or the appellant to give, I know, because I was working on some envelopes today. The person who is applying or appealing has to get all of those addresses, has to get the envelopes addressed, has to put the stamps on it. So that is always, that onus is always on the applicant or the appellant. With, you know, we get a lot of help. When I needed to know the addresses to send out to the appeal, I went to Sean Wampler, and she whipped it out for me like that, and the planning staff helped. And they, they also give guidance on what you need to put in the notice and things like that. So there's, there's not a lot of big mysteries here. But instead of having individual clusters come up whenever they discover it, let's just have an opening thing that says, guys, we're thinking about doing this here in your neighborhood. We're going to tell you what we have in mind before we put in an application, and we want to hear what you say. I do have to say, and I give great credit to the developers of the Eastport Shopping Center, they've done this for four years easily, and the plans have changed. They've been very responsive to what the input from the citizens are. So I don't think this is new or novel, or even, well, four years is pretty onerous. I would, I would agree to that, but I think if we'd actually started at the right place, we could have cut a lot of that out. And so frankly, instead of adding to the permitting, I think it will actually, the process, I think you'd actually could cut it down, because now we're all starting off at the same place. But I'm sorry, I'm arguing for when we pick up the, the ordinance rather than, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
has to get the envelopes addressed, has to put the stamps on it. So, that is always, that onus is always on the applicant or the appellant. With, you know, we get a lot of help. When I needed to know the addresses to send out to the appeal, I went to Shawn Wampler. And she whipped it out for me like that. And the planning staff helped. And they, they also give guidance on what you need to put in the notice and things like that. So, there's, there's not a lot of big mysteries here. But instead of having individual clusters come up whenever they discover it, let's just have an, an opening thing that says, "Guys, we're thinking about doing this here in your neighborhood. We're going to tell you what we have in mind before we put in an application. And we want to hear what you say." I do have to say, and I give great credit to the developers of the Eastport Shopping Center. They've done this for four years easily. And the plans have changed. They've been very responsive to what the input from the citizens are. So, I, I don't think this is new or novel. Or even, well, four years is pretty onerous. I would, I would agree to that. But I think if we'd actually started at the right place, we could have cut a lot of that out. And so frankly, instead of adding to the permitting, uh, I think it will actually, the process, I think you'd actually could cut it down. Because now we're all starting off at the same place. But I'm sorry, I'm arguing for when we pick up the, the ordinance rather than, uh... Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you hear anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Diane Butler, and I live at 407 Third Street. And I would just like to thank Alderman Arnett and Alderman Budge for sponsoring the important revisions to our development review process. O-3517 ensures transparency in a process that would currently not provide a public hearing in front of our fellow citizens who are members of the Planning Commission for all the major projects and developments that impact our neighborhoods. Projects like Crystal Spring. The way Crystal Spring has been filed, there is a very good chance that the Planning Commission will never hear this. And I think it's a loophole that needs to be closed because it's a major project and it does impact not just Eastport. It impacts very, uh, many members of our, our community. And it, it's a loophole that needs to be closed. So, anyway, thank you, Alderman, um, Budge and Alderman Arnett for introducing this. The Planning Commission really is often the only real seat at the table that our citizen residents have with regard to these projects that impact, um, our lives and our quality of life. So, I would urge you to vote in favor of this ordinance. And there are some technical questions about notice, but I do think it's a red herring. I think developers can be very good at throwing out these little problems that sink a bill. And I'm just asking you all to vote in front, in favor of the citizens. Because we really do matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a question? Any movement? There's a public hearing closed. Take a ten-minute recess or you can meet.
No wink in the council chamber. Just saying. Oh, my mic.
The City Council is now back in session. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous items, beginning with ID 33017, fiscal year 2017 unpaid invoices.
Is there a motion to approve ID 33017?
So moved.
Second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT 518, transfer from fund balance, transfer to Parkside Preserve Acquisition of Property.
Is there a motion to approve GT 518?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam City Attorney?
Next item on the agenda is GT 618, transfer from Market House Renovations, transfer to City Facility Improvements.
Motion to approve GT 6-18?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT 718, transfer from Stormwater Management retrofit, transfer to Dorsey Avenue Storm Drain.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GA 2018, POS, City of Annapolis Nature Area.
Is there a motion to adopt GA 2018?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GA 2118, overtime for Anne Arundel County Tobacco Sales Compliance Project.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Legislative Actions on Second Reader, beginning with O-2617, Zoning District Boundary Adjustments.
Is there a motion to adopt O-2617?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Budge?
Uh, as the owner of a, uh, property that is split-zoned, um, I have a conflict of interest on this piece of legislation and cannot participate.
Understood. Is there any other discussion? Alderman Arnett?
Uh, as the sponsor of brief explanation, as brief as I can be, uh, the, this is long in the making. It's really an effort that's almost a decade old. And it was precipitated because in Eastport, along Fourth Street, on both sides of the street, the, the properties are split in their zoning. The front portion is B2. The rear thirty feet is R2NC. And from time to time, it has caused complications. It was a major complication when the boatyard was trying to get its approval and then when it was trying to get approval for the addition of the boatyard market. There are other properties like that in Ward Eight. And, um, due to the good staff work by planning and zoning, we discovered there's a lot of these kinds of properties all over the city, including Alderman Budge's property. The intent here is to expand the code to allow property owners to come in and change their zoning from split to one zoning. The code currently allows, uh, anyone with a property with split zoning that is the lesser of twenty percent of the property or five thousand feet to already go to the appeals board and ask for the zoning to be consolidated across the lot. This legislation essentially says anybody can come in and ask, uh, petition the appeals board to change the zoning on their parcel to one zoning. Uh, the staff and the Planning Commission came up with some refinements to the legislation, which I totally subscribe to. One of them is that there are five different zoning designations. And we need to allow with this code the ability to go from, say, a residential zoning designation to a commercial designation. And there are other things that needed to be done to enhance the code. Both the planning staff and the, um, Planning Commission recommended three amendments, which I subscribe to. I, uh, am tonight offering a fourth amendment, which would be to limit the size of the parcel that could take care of this reme-, take advantage of this remedy, to one acre or less. At the Rules Committee, there was expression of concern about not knowing, uh, what the impact of this would be on, uh, zones outside of Ward Eight. Obviously, I've thoroughly explored this in Ward Eight. I do think this is a good remedy for the entire city. But I'm certainly prepared to, um, uh, either exclude wards that don't want to be part of this or have a fifth amendment that would, um, make this obtained to Ward Eight only. I, I think it's something that all owners should be able to have available to them. But, uh, that's, for me, the very brief explanation.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did have a discussion about this piece of legislation, uh, at the Rules Committee meeting. And, and I'm not going to speak for Alderwoman Finlayson, but I think I, she would agree. That we did have some concerns because we don't know in our wards, uh, what this, what kind of impact this legislation would have. We did, uh, speak with Mr. Gutwold about it. And we were asking for a list of the properties, just like the indoor theater property. I mean, and, and I remember Alderwoman Finlayson basically saying that it was small slivers of property, which it was. But I was truly impacted on the two out of three properties with the indoor theater, which brought about the amendment that we needed, uh, to satisfy the residents in, in my ward. But this is much larger. And I don't feel comfortable voting for this unless it is restricted to Ward Eight or no, no other wards. If the other wards feel comfortable about going ahead with it, but I certainly, at this point, can't go along with it for Ward Three. I've got too many, I think, Mr. Uh, Mr. Gutwold was saying there were three hundred-plus properties that probably, uh, were split-zoned. Do I have the, Mr. Gutwold, come forward, finally?
Pete Gutwold, Director of Planning and Zoning. Uh, there's a total of five hundred, but about two hundred and thirty-three that are of significant size. And that's not really quanti- quantified as to what, but it's more than just a sliver of property that are about more than, there's about two hundred and thirty-three citywide.
Yeah. So, that, that's really my, my real, real major concern. I, I can't, I can't go with this, knowing that there's property in Ward Th-, I'm more than likely, I'm sure, there's properties in Ward Three, without assessing each and every piece of property. Like I said, I'll say it again, I but Anne Arundel County. And I have no control over what they do over there. I butt Anne Arundel County, and I have no control over what they do over there. So I'm really extraordinarily concerned about the impact of Ward Three. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. I'm not going to reiterate what Alderman Pindell Charles said, but two hundred and thirty-three is an awfully large number. And that means all of us probably have dozens of properties that are impacted, that will be impacted by this legislation. And while we had a few people come out to speak, I would think that if there was an overwhelming position of support, we would have heard from a lot more people who are really impacted. So that tells me that people don't know, and that we don't know. And so I think that we're not ready to move this, not that it doesn't have value, but we keep talking about transparency, so let's really be transparent. And let's make sure that we're aware of what we're doing before we take an action. Thank you.
Could you give my, Alderman Pfeifer?
I was just hoping Director Gutwold could give us sort of an explanation of if you own a property or were to buy a property that was split zoned and you learned about it at that point, what would the current system not allow you to do with your property? What benefit would this be to you if you were one of those two hundred and thirty property owners?
Well, what it would allow you to do is to go to the Board of, through the Board of Appeals process, it would allow you to enjoy, if you had R2 and B2, you could enjoy the whole property as a commercial property, instead of being restricted.
That's only limited based on the percentages of...
It's percentages, but it's also limited to the categories. So you can go from, you can, R1 to R3, residential, commercial, those are the five different maritime zones, the five different zoning classifications. So right now, you could only do that to R1 to R3, or R2 to R, you know, that kind of stuff. This would, with the amendments, with the proposed amendments, what I brought to Alderman Arnett's attention is that there's another sentence that needs to be stricken from there about the categories. So to allow it to go from B2 to R2, T2, no, just kidding. You need, you know, you need the category stricken, so to allow them to enjoy the commercial property.
So it's, I mean, you could make a case, it's for those two hundred and thirty constituents of ours who have this particular dynamic, it's giving them more flexibility to, I mean, they would potentially be very interested in this.
Yes, it creates a lot more flexibility in terms of, you know, utilization of the property for, you know, for the difference in zoning categories.
Thank you.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Yes, just to make a comment, I would, I'm just going to take a leap. I would think, I would assume, probably out of these two hundred and thirty-three properties, how many people really, really, truly know that it's split zoned? I mean, I know Alderman Budge keeps up, but I would venture to say there are people out there who may not even be aware that their property is split zoned.
Alderman Arnett's answer that, then they don't care to take advantage of this legislation.
Well, when, with...
And it's not hurting them.
Well, if something ever came up, say they sold a property, and that person knew, and that affects the people around them, then you got a problem.
Maybe yes, maybe no. I mean, it is the onus of the property owner to understand before they buy.
I understand.
Those conditions, but again, if there's, if it exists on your property and it's not bothering you, you don't have to take advantage of this.
I understand that, but I'm saying if that person decides to sell to someone who decides to take advantage of it, then it affects the people that live around that person, that piece of property. That's all I'm saying.
Aye.
Is there any other discussion, comments?
So there are at least four amendments that were recommended by staff and the planning commission. They're contained in the planning commission findings that are attached in our legislation. The first amendment addresses in the code 2120O30A, unique conditions, and the staff and the planning commission, the legislation strikes that whole section. The planning commission and the staff recommended language that is shown in the recommendations. The planning commission would say owing to conditions, so it'd be unique conditions owing to conditions, particularly to the property, and not because of any action taken by the applicant. A literal enforcement of the zoning law would result in unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty as specified in the zoning law. So that would be Amendment One. Amendment Two speaks to 212010, and that speaks to what the zoning would be changed to, what the lot would be changed to, and this says that it would go to the majority zoning. So if fifty-one percent of the lot is B2, then the relief granted by the Board of Appeals would be to change all of it to B2. If fifty-one percent of it is, say, R2NC, then the relief that the Board of Appeals, and please, Pete, if I misstate anything, correct me, but I think I'm on the right track. So, and then the third amendment...
Alderman, can I ask a question about the second one before you move on?
Sure.
If a resident wants to change the zoning to the greater, which happens to be the less, lesser percentage.
No.
Let's say, okay, fifty-one, forty-nine.
Right.
R2, R3.
Right.
Can they move to R3?
Not if it's...
With forty-nine percent?
No, no, that's, with this amendment.
So what would, how would that happen? And maybe it's a question for the planning director.
Please.
That, that, it removes that ability. I mean, you never had that ability to begin with because it was limited to twenty percent. You know, it had to be the zoning classification that was twenty percent. So it had to be the majority already. Eighty percent of the property had to be the one classification even to enjoy the R3 piece of the property, or the R, whatever the case may be, the split zone for the whole property. So if the property was always, if properties of the lesser amount, you never could enjoy the higher zoning classification.
So if it's a fifty-one, forty-nine split, you'd never have that option?
Correct. You'd have, you'd have to stay with, right. It has to be the majority of the property.
I mean, there are other remedies. I mean, you could come in for a tax amendment.
Well, that's...
For a zoning change, yeah, you can ask for a comprehensive, yeah, you can ask for a zoning change. I'm sorry, yeah, that option's still out there. I just meant within this provision.
So we'd go back to the original process?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett, I just mentioned in Amendment Two, it also strikes the categories.
Right, yes. In, yes, in 210601010. And that also speaks to Amendment Three, which recognizes that, also in 2106040, there would need to be language changes to make it consistent with 2120 across the board, and that is, again, saying the majority and striking out other language that talks about the limitations. So those are the recommendations from the staff and the planning commission, and I would, I would, I would move those three, and then the fourth one that I would offer that is from me and not from the staff of the planning commission is in 2120O30 to add a category D called property size, and the granting of this district bounding change will only apply to properties of one acre or less. Now, I chose one acre arbitrarily because it covers everything that affects me. There could be debate about what that size should be, but one acre is about ninety thousand square feet, and we don't have very many properties in Ward other than already commercial properties that would come close to that. So those would be the four amendments. The fifth amendment, if it is desired by my colleagues, and I understand their need to understand what this would do in their wards, would be to either exclude wards from this legislation or have this legislation, as Amendment Five, obtain only to Ward Eight. And I leave that to your discretion. But I would move certainly the first four amendments.
Yeah, I just want to bring it to everyone's attention and correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Arnett. We had our Rules Committee meeting last week, and we all agreed to postpone this matter based on not knowing what the implications are with the properties in our own ward. I checked with Ms. Green just to make sure I had written it down correctly in my notes. So I guess I'm a little confused as to why it's on the agenda tonight.
Well, because the Rules Committee doesn't have the power to postpone. It can recommend, but it's not...
So the recommendation was to postpone with no findings, I guess?
Pardon me?
I said the recommendation, the recommendation was to postpone with no findings, but the weight of that carried over to this body. Okay, I'm a little confused, I guess.
My sense of it is that the Rules Committee can recommend anything, but it doesn't command the entire body.
Got you.
The remedy that I would offer, from the discussion at Rules that I heard, was resistance on the part of you and the other member, was you didn't know how it would affect. I get that, and I'm not wanting to do anything that would impose something on you without you being totally comfortable.
Right, I understand, and I'm glad you brought up the possibility of the Fifth Amendment. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I certainly would move the first four amendments, and then we can discuss what the comfort level is of each ward about what the fifth one would be, which would either be to exclude wards that don't want to be included in this, or only include this coverage for Ward Eight.
I would like to kind of hear what my colleagues' kind of sense of it all is. Right, I got it.
Thank you.
Right.
Any other discussion on four amendments?
I've got the three amendments from the Planning Commission. I don't have the other...
Yeah, the fourth one is on the second page of the ordinance under 2120O30.
Okay.
Is a new Section D, property size, and it limits the size of the property that can take advantage of this remedy to a property that is one acre or less.
Wait a minute, that's 2120...
2120O30, a new Section D, which would be the...
Surrounding properties?
Property size, and it limits this remedy. Frankly, I think we'll come back as we, particularly as the staff continues to explore this, we'll want to come back and make that larger, but we figured that, I figured that starting with the small properties that are, which is a big majority of them, to just put that size limit on would be an incremental approach.
How many are of different sizes? I mean, you seem to have that information.
Well, you have it too. There was a report from the planning department. It was a nice, beautiful map with colors on it, and most of the parcels in my...
Is it attached?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it should be. It was a color...
It was in our staff report to the planning commission. It should be attached.
Oh, in the staff report to the planning commission, not to...
Well, it's, it's...
Okay. Well, most of them are small. There are some big ones, and in fact, one of the big ones is part of the Crystal Spring parcel. Well, that's a, that's kind of a most obvious one. I am still looking for the Fourth Amendment, and it's attached to what?
I don't know if the Fourth Amendment got handed out or not. That was the amendment that I discussed at the Rules Committee. I don't know if it got transferred. I would offer, I would offer it from the floor.
Was it attached to the Rules Committee?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, at the end of the staff report.
Any other discussion on the amendments? I believe we're heading onto the block.
Please.
If you have other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Of the first four amendments.
Aye.
No.
No.
So the Fifth Amendment is, as I said, up to the will of the members. I'm, I will offer a Fifth Amendment that says that this mechanism is available in Ward Eight. I would welcome any other ward that would like to take advantage of this mechanism, but, or the alternative is to say this amendment will not cover Wards Two and Three, however, however the will. But I will make the motion that we, the Fifth Amendment would be that this legislation only obtains in Ward Eight, and then you can decide. So hopefully, there'll be a second.
You have a second?
I'll second that dimension.
Discussion?
Why just Ward Eight, curiously? I mean, I know there are two my colleagues...
Thank you, Alderman Israel. That's exactly what Dick Israel said, sitting in that seat nine years ago. If this is good, yeah, please, if this is good enough for Ward Eight, why shouldn't we do it citywide? And I stupidly said, sure, because that's just a quick fix.
I'm not suggesting that, and I understand that Ward Eight is what you know the best, and it's where it appears to me that we have probably more of those in Ward Eight than most other wards, more split zoning. And I'm not necessarily against it, I just, I know, there are two, two wards I think would like to be exempted that I'm aware of, and I'm fine with being exempted, but I, I'm just...
No, I mean, I think, I think this is of a benefit to the property owner. It gives them an option that can block certain things. For example, on Fourth Street, because of the split zoning, it had an impact on the ability to park.
Look, I'll support it if that, if, you know, if I could cut you off, I just thought there might be something a little bit...
Well, I mean, do you want to be included?
Deeper, deeper than that.
So it'd be Ward Eight and Ward Two, Fuzen buddies?
No, I can, we can always propose similar legislation at a later time, so.
So I've made the motion, it's been seconded, that this obtained to Ward Eight only.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Does the resident have a vote?
Move.
Is there a motion to move as amended?
I move O 2617 as amended.
Second. Discussion? All right, before we call the roll, I want to explain my vote real quick. Correction. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt on Third Reader?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Just want to get some comments real quick from my colleagues on the council about this legislation. First of all, I think the sponsors are putting it forward. I think the most difficult thing over my four years has probably been zoning. Elections are about it. Everything we deal with zoning is a big challenge. And I understand why you did it in the good intentions, but there's a number of pieces of legislation I'll be voting against tonight, including some that I've introduced and want to pull them off the agenda, because I don't think we have time to rush it and get it through at the end. As we mentioned, Crystal Spring would have been effective. Now it's not anymore because of that. But I intend to vote no on this other piece of legislation, just due to the timeliness at the end of it. But I certainly respect you all going forward. I think the new council is going to have two major challenges coming forward, the comprehensive plan and a major overhaul. So it'd be my intention to incorporate them in that.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, I'm a man, pan lady.
No.
Alderman Pfeifer? Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Stay.
Alderman Penn?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance O 3417, approvals of exterior changes in the historic district.
Is there a motion to approve, excuse me, O 3417?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All, all right, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Guess throwing me off guard here. Is there a motion to adopt O 3417 on Third Reader?
So, second. So, second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Madam Mayor and Lady?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Felason?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Guys have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-3517, revisions to development, development review.
Is there a motion to adopt O-3517?
So move. Second.
I believe there's some amendments. We understand this from the floor.
Could be.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we have several amendments to offer. The first is a, largely a technical and clarifying amendment that discusses, addresses the submission of responses to the developer's written summary. The developer does, does his community meeting, gives a written summary to planning and zoning, and at the moment, as written, the ordinance says that the, if you, if a community member wishes to write a rebuttal or provide additional comments, that those are given to the developer or the applicant. The change is to have those provided to planning and zoning so that they reside alongside the comments that are given by the developer and can be made public as well. The second amendment is the notice that is provided to property owners within 200 feet. We are proposing to change that to say property owners and tenants, because here in the city, we have a number of absentee landlords and it is the people who are residing and doing business close to prospective developments that are impacted the most and certainly that the council hears from the most. The third amendment regards the appeals process from decisions that are made by the Planning Commission. In this case, we are talking strictly about Planning Commission decisions on major site design reviews. Since they did not have that in their wheelhouse before, the amendment is to have their decisions be appealed to the Circuit Court, just like all other decisions of the Planning Commission. I hear the comments from the public that it would be, might be desirable to have those go to the Board of Appeals, but I would recommend that consideration be for separate legislation that addresses all decisions from the Planning Commission and figures out where they should go. The decisions, I think, from the Planning Commission should all go to one place and I'm not going to offer an opinion on which place that should be, but, so this amendment is offered so that the appeals from the Planning Commission are consistent with other appeals from the Planning Commission. And finally, the, we had left open the language concerning when this goes into effect and who it affects. As Alderman Arnett and I were developing the legislation, we discussed this with Director Goodwald and he stated his intent was to grandfather any applications that were already in the pipeline. And we agreed with that, but since we didn't say anything about that in the legislation, we are offering this as an amendment to make it explicit so that we are not changing the rules in midstream on projects that have already been filed in good faith. And so if it, if it's acceptable to my fellow members of the council, I move all four of those at once.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Guys have it. Is there any other amendments from the floor?
Well, I'm trying to remember what it is, but it was something that Mr. Hyatt recommended.
Yes, as we've had in our discussions this evening, the, there has been concern from many over lack of definition of who, what groups need to be notified when people are notified. It's fairly clear who the property owners and tenants are that are within 200 feet, but who is a resident association or a business association that's immediately impacted? And Mr. Hyatt offered an amendment, his amendment too, which spells out that the Department of Planning and Zoning will provide that list to the, will provide a list of the associations and so forth to the developer. And so I move that to eliminate this source of confusion. We adopt Hyatt Amendment Number Two.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
I guess, I was mentioning it to some folks in our audience during the break. I mean, if we carry all this to its logical conclusion, anything along the West Street corridor or the Forest Drive corridor, and I'm going to use Crystal Spring as a bad example, that everyone in the city should be given notice. Everyone uses West Street? Everyone uses Forest Drive? And I think everyone in this city, if we explain to them to some degree, say, Crystal Spring, would say, yes, that affects me. So do we give everyone notice? Do we put it on their utility bill? Do we put a big sign out in the middle of the property? Do we put it in the Capitol? Do we put it on Facebook? Where do we go with this? I guess I'm leaning toward, well, I am, voting for the Budge amendments, but when we get to the developer part, I think we're getting into murky waters. I don't see how the two can live together, I guess is my point. It's something that's just not quite right.
If I may?
Alderman Budge?
The section of the ordinance that we're talking about addresses the groups that need to be given notice. The business associations, the resident associations and so forth. And the text presently says, everybody who is immediately, every organization that will be immediately impacted by the development. So the, the list that needs to be provided is strictly of the associations, of which there are several dozen, not 38,000. And I think that's the key takeaway here. The other lists are people who may have spoken at a prior hearing on this legis, on a particular development, and those are lists of folks who are fairly well-known because they attended the hearing and showed up and signed in. So I hope that answers your concern.
Hmm, it answers it, but I'm still not satisfied.
If we, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if we follow the Allen Hyatt Amendment and put the onus on the planning staff, who I think are very good at knowing who the, who the interested parties are, I think we're trying to clarify or address the very situation that Mr. Wilson expressed some concerns about. So I will admit that I, my initial notion in drafting this was that we really want the developers to get to know the community and know who they should reach out to, but I accept as equally fair that our planning staff and John Wompler with her GIS can be very helpful to them in the process. And this is an attempt to reach out to and then hear the comments that were given to us by Mr. Kopecky and Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Hyatt and this evening and other nights of Mr. Wilson. So we hadn't intended to do it this way, but this amendment, I think, is moving in the direction that we've heard the developers talk to us about. So I think it's very consistent with the first, first set of amendments and I hope will alleviate some fears on the, and their fear is really this. If there's somebody who gets left out because they didn't detect them, they're worried about at the 11th hour, that group saying, wait a minute, I didn't get notified and therefore you've got to start all over. And I can understand why the developers would be wary of that. So if the onus is on the city, then the developers relieved of that liability.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate the, the spirit of this and that it provides perhaps even more transparency than we have right now, but I'm troubled by the notice requirements or in some cases, lack thereof. I think that my colleague from Ward Three gave the Crystal Springs example, and that's an excellent example of who the heck do you notify? The issue that I may have in my ward that seems to be ongoing right now is, you know, would be, who do you notify? Everybody that lives along Cedar Park Road in my case, I think you're aware of what I'm talking about. All of Admiral Heights, all of Admiral Heights and all of Homewood, because Homewood may have increased traffic as a result of that, and certainly people that live along Admiral Drive would be arguably affected or at least could be arguably affected. And I, it just seems like a good idea, frankly, I don't really want to vote this down, but on the other hand, I'm not prepared to vote for this, in favor of this tonight, the way it's worded right now. I agree that the Hyatt Amendment is, is better than what is there right now, but I just don't think it's enough to make me go in favor of it. Thank you.
Alderman Budge?
Yes, to, to address this concern, the legislation is fairly clear that in terms of notifying individuals, it is just individuals that live within 200 feet of the property that's proposed to be developed. The other notifications are to groups that, and is strictly to, as the wording says, a position, a person in position of authority of each homeowner's association, community association, condominium association and so forth. You don't have to provide notice to each member of the group. You just have to tell the group, the head of Admiral Heights and the other groups, this is going on so that they are not caught by surprise.
Alderman-
Go ahead, Alderman Pan.
But these are volunteers and it's not right for the city to put an onus on them to do what is, in effect, a city or developer type of function. I saw this happen in my ward on a number of issues, most notably the Nitro Circus issues that came through. They, they took a terrible beating for something, you know, simply giving their opinion and it's not right to depend on them. I mean, Facebook pages, for example, I mean, maybe half the community are members of the community association. What about the other half who weren't members? There, there's, it's not a fail-safe issue, I mean, a means of doing things by any means, and I don't think we should shift responsibility to those folks, willing as they might be to take it, but I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Yeah, I, my, I guess my issue goes even deeper than what we're talking about here. Me, I, along with the mayor, we're the only people sitting on this dais who have not completed a full term on this council. And someone has told me, in order to understand any system, you have to go through a full cycle. And I'm troubled by the fact that, and I'm learning, still learning, by the fact that we bring about legislation and development is number one on the list from what I've heard and all the little surveys or big surveys that are taken, is an extremely important issue in all of our wards. That we bring forth legis, and this is no disparagement to any of you on this council, believe me, that we bring forth such legislation at 11:59 and 59 seconds. I really got a problem with that. When there are too many questions being asked about legislation, that all of us, whether we're going to be here in December or not, are going to still have to live with. I would think or hope that legislation that we bring before a body such as this on the last day of some of us would not entail this much angst and trepidation. But like I said, this is my first time going through a complete cycle, as with the mayor, but that, that's the troubling part that I have with, with some of this legislation. I mean, I'm willing to go along and get along, but I, at some point, I got to kind of step back and say, I don't think so. It's just too much, too late. Thank you.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
I guess I would take a different tactic in thinking about this particular legislation, in particular, the Hyatt Amendment we're talking about. It strikes me that this, the impetus of this is not to say that development is, shouldn't happen or should happen, is to say, when it's happening, the public deserves to have a bite at the apple earlier in the process. And that's good for the developer and for the residents to basically be at the table sooner and creating a mechanism to do that. The Hyatt Amendment, I think, is important because from what we heard from Leo Wilson tonight and others, is if you say to them, you, you got this mandate now, you got to go out and do these public hearings on the front end, but if you forget one group, or there's somebody who feels they got slighted, and I've seen this happen in my ward on other development projects, but folks, you know, that the developer left our homeowner association off this list because they're trying to keep silence us. I mean, that sort of stuff, which, if it happened, it was an oversight, but people, people get, it, it shapes the landscape for going forward. So that this is an attempt to sort of cut some of that stuff out of the process. The Hyatt Amendment is basically to say, who's keeping the list and who's responsible for inviting people to the thing? And the city taking the responsibility instead of the developer. I think, I think that's not a bad system and I think we're probably thinking about it too narrow. That what we should be looking at is, obviously, we can figure out who the homeowner associations are and who the environmental groups are, make sure they're on the list, but what we're doing here, if we do this tonight, is an important thing that should matter to all the residents, that they are going to have a more transparent involvement in projects that are coming forward in their city, and they should be happy about that. And so maybe the way to do it is, we, you know, you announce it in a public way and say, you can, you can opt into this list if you want to be informed about future events that, as these community meetings get scheduled in the future. And you can live in Ward Seven and the project could be in Ward Three, but you will at least know about it. And then hopefully then we would have a better discussion because people would not feel like the rug's being pulled out from under them or they're being surprised by something. So I, I look at it as if we pass this amendment and the staff takes that as, and the ball and run with it and say, I think we can create a mechanism here where we let people know that this new thing is here so you can have more input, but the burden's on you to opt into it and put yourself on a list so you can find out about future ones. I think if we can do that, it should alleviate some of these concerns about, do you have to invite everybody or do you limit it to just too narrow? And people will feel there's an opportunity. So I think if we do it in that spirit, it makes some sense.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Yeah. I respect and to- I respect and totally understand what you're saying, Alderman Pfeiffer, but I think the, the evidence is, just the fact that we're having this in-depth discussion kind of proves my point, that there is something, there's something troubling in my soul. I guess, they sound kind of corny. I just, I can't, it's something about this that is just not, I'm just not, I won't say grasping, but I just don't, I, I got a real problem when we do- grasping, but I just don't, I, I got a real problem when we do these things at the last minute. I really do. I can't help it, I'm sorry.
I think it was two weeks ago when we were only mildly grappling with legislation that we had been talking about and thinking about and planning to do for years. And the argument was, it's too close to the end of our terms, let's not do anything that's this significant because it's untimely. Let's leave it to the next council to do. And the legislation died. And now we bring forward other legislation that is equally as significant and equally as impactful in a different way, and it's okay to try to amend it until we, and amend it and amend it until we get it right in the 11th hour, but this is okay. You know, I'm really big on equity and treating everybody and everything equally. There isn't a homeowner's association in every part of our community in the city. Believe it or not, everybody isn't represented. So, everybody isn't going to be represented in this legislation either, and I don't care how hard Mr. Gutwall's staff tries to come up with a master list or how hard the developers work to come up with a master list, people will be left out. Now, I understand and appreciate giving people a voice because everybody should have one, but I look at what happened with the Rocky Gorge legislation when the residents of Oxford Landing were not given a voice, and people from across town weighed in and those voices were heard above the people who are impacted by that development. So, I don't quite understand why we should be working so hard right now in the 11th hour to do something that's not going to address everybody's needs, will not speak to everybody's concerns. I mean, we have a lot of people who come from outside of the city because they live across the city line and impact what we do, and we let them. They don't pay taxes here, but we give them a voice. And how is that addressed in this legislation? Just one of the numerous pieces that need to be fixed, I think, in this legislation. So, are we going to just move forward with it anyway for the sake of doing something? And we all know how difficult it is to go back and right a wrong. So, we can't pretend that, oh, we'll fix those problems later. That almost never happens. So, do we continue to work to try to get it right right now even though we couldn't do the same thing for legislation two weeks ago? Or do we not act on this legislation? No one wants to kill it, but there are quite a few people around this dais that aren't comfortable with it as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As I often, as is often the case, I find myself agreeing with the comments of Alderman Pfeiffer, so rather than repeat them, I'll just say I associate myself with the comments he made. And then the one additional comment I'd like to make, the difference I see between the legislation that died two weeks ago versus the one now is that legislation did not have the public support, whereas the motion that we have before us is about notice, which was offered by one of our local attorneys, and I don't, I have not received opposition comments about this notice provision. I think generally, the public is supportive of the underlying legislation. So, that's how I distinguish my actions between those two, that night and tonight.
So, I would just gently remind that we're not talking about all the legislation, we're
talking about the Hyatt amendment, which again, I think, is an attempt to alleviate some concerns expressed at public testimony many times. I agree with Alderman Pfeiffer, and we're never going to have a perfect system. There's always going to be someone or some group that we missed, but that shouldn't stop us from trying to perfect the system. Remember, the underlying thrust of the specific amendment we're talking about is to clarify who's going to be responsible for giving the notice. The underlying thrust of the entire legislation is to empower, enfranchise our very own citizens, our very own electorate, and give them a seat at the table in a way that they have not had before. I don't think that's a tough concept, and I don't think it's something that is being rushed to judgment. That's what we're here to do, and it doesn't make any difference if we do it in the middle of July of this year or we did it two years before. The basic elements of enfranchising our populace are the same. We're always going to be at the end of a term, unless we want to pass legislation that says the council doesn't do anything after such and such a date, and I would not be in favor of that legislation. We will be at the end of a term every four years. The amendment is trying to be responsive to speakers who have come before us. I think it is a good amendment and I would urge us to vote in favor of the amendment. We can get back to Alderman Pindell Charles' feeling of unease, I mean, it's your feeling, so it is your feeling, it's, you know, it's totally legitimate and we need to talk about that, but right now, we're just talking about whether we adopt the Alan Hyatt amendment in terms of how notification is being given.
And I'm going to go back to a comment that Alderman Lippman made, and I respect his comments, but just because you don't hear from somebody who doesn't, who opposes or doesn't oppose a piece of legislation, it doesn't matter. Some wards in the city depend on their alderperson to make the decisions. They're not going to come in here and wave signs or email us up the wazoo or call us on the phone. That's not how some wards operate. They vote us in, and I'm going to speak for mine, to decipher and listen to what goes on here. Some of them, and I'm going down that road again, have multiple jobs, taking care of multiple relatives, and all the daily living that has to be done, they don't have the time nor the energy to come in here or to call us or email us and tell us what they think about a piece of legislation. That's just the way it is. And every ward operates differently, and so my residents, a good majority of them, depend on me to take a look at these things and to make a conscious decision as to what I think is good or not. I mean, that's just the way it is. Ward One doesn't necessarily operate like that. It's different, and I think we need to, bringing up something Alderman Pfeiffer said, we need to recognize that on this body, not, I'm not saying that we don't, but we need to realize that some wards operate differently. We're the, I'm the spokesperson here for Ward Three. We're just not going to have a group of people come in here and wave signs and do whatever and send job forms and all that sort of thing. It's just not going to happen. And so, that's just the way it is, and so, we need to recognize or be a little more cognizant of that. It's, we're here for a purpose, and that's, I guess that's all I have to say about it.
Yes, I would like to withdraw all of my comments previously, and I'll make those statements again when it's appropriate.
Okay. Alderman Budge? Right, question's been called. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, I have it. Are there any other amendments? Onto the legislation itself? Is there a motion to adopt O-3517 as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Alderman Pfeiffer?
I really am not going to repeat all of my remarks. I'm sure everybody remembers gravitatively what I said, so I will not repeat it, but I would like it on the record for the legislation as amended. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess, I guess, you know, I've heard quite a few things and it's for the first time, this piece of legislation, I've gotten equal, equal, equal comments for and against. Normally, I give 100 to two, one way or the other, but I've got both positive and negative sides, both sides of the coin, all week. For this whole month of meetings, I've been hearing folks talk about voting on the 7th, depending on how folk around this dais cast votes. I'm leaving, and I just, for the life of me, you know, to think that anybody here casts a vote based on those types of threats, because that's what they are, they're threats. And it's unfair to the folk that's going to return to this body, and does have an election on November 7th. So, I just, I wish, I know that this body, for the eight years I've been here, I think everybody vote day and time, and what happens in the best interest of the people that reside here in the city of Annapolis. Notwithstanding, Alderman Pfeiffer did make a bunch of comments about folk who are on the other side of our city lines, who raise up a certain amount of fervor over what we do here as a council. And that's, they're right, First Amendment, free speech. Come on down, we hear you, we take it into consideration, but the blast sentence read is always first, and I like to think that this body is going to vote in the best interest of the citizens. This piece of legislation, for me, it's the same place it was with the other piece of legislation. It's a tough piece. One-third of this council's going to be gone. Maybe we shouldn't vote, and on it tonight, maybe it should go to the next council. I'll see what happens around this dais. I'm keenly aware of that. I'm the eighth person, the last vote here tonight. And I'll make a decision accordingly. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unlike a lot of the legislation that we are asked to vote on, I don't have particularly strong feelings on either side of this one, and that's because I see some merits on either side. We've had concerns expressed from developers that I'm sympathetic to, concerns including that it'll cause additional expense, sometimes without justification, for some site design reviews that are insignificant, although classified as major, could cause delay in expenses. I'm sympathetic to the question about notice provisions being vague and possibly resulting in wasteful procedural appeals, and that the notice to tenants, for instance, might be difficult to accomplish. I also am sympathetic to some of the concerns from the community members. One of the suggestions was that we expand the reach of notice from 200 feet to 500 or 1,000 feet, which might have some merit, frankly, and where the best place for the appeals is. I think ultimately, I think Alderman Budge's amendment about appeals being consistent to go to the Planning Commission, fund the Planning Commission, go to the Circuit Court is the right one. And I'm also pleased that we addressed the grandfathering, which some members of the community thought that we were too generous in what we would grandfather and what we wouldn't grandfather. Ultimately, though, this body referred this matter to the Planning Commission, and they have a lot more experience and background than I think collectively we do. Their amendments, their suggestions were that we make two amendments and otherwise approve this legislation. Their amendments were, one that we did, which was set appeals from Planning Commission to the Circuit Court, and then we add the grandfathering clause. You know, the whole concept of having committees and having commissions and boards is so that they can dive in to do the work rather than having a full committee of the whole council. I'm not on the Planning Commission, I'm not on the various committees that review this, so I'm, I get the benefit and I rely on the benefit of recommendations. And so, for, in this case, I'm leaning towards or favor the recommendations of the Planning Commission's amendments, and with hesitation and with some trepidation, I think, I am leaning towards voting for this legislation, because ultimately, I think it does more good than the harm that it potentially could do and the harm that it potentially can, does in terms of being costly and unnecessary time delays can be remedied. In an ideal situation, we would have more time to fix this. We don't have that time, so while not being thrilled with any of my three options of voting it up, down, or trying to fix it on the spot, on the fly, I think the best of those options is to approve this, see how it works out, and if necessary, if the concerns that have been expressed bear to be reality, then fix it in future by the next council.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to adopt O-3517 on third reader?
So moved.
We did? Oh, we didn't vote on? Apologize. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
No.
Is there a motion to adopt O-3517 on third reader?
So moved.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pan, ladies?
No.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
No.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Very reluctantly, aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
No.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Motion carries. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-3717, parking places and parking lots.
Is there a motion to adopt O-3717?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Budge?
Yes, we have coming at us five pieces of legislation that are intertwined, starting with this one. The motion as written, or the ordinance as written, excuse me, repeals the entire city code related to parking lots. The code presently says that a parking lot must be registered with the city clerk, which has never happened in anyone's memory as far as we can track down. It provides a number of physical, it specifies a number of physical characteristics of the parking lot, like sizes of sidewalks and so forth, which more properly would be in zoning code or something like that. And for the most part, I tend to agree that those should go away. However, there's a small element of not quite so fast. A private parking lot is a entity that transacts business with the public, and I think it is a good idea for the city to require that the public receive notice if, of what the rates are going to be at the parking lot, if a vehicle is going to be immobilized in any fashion, whether it's chains or wheel boots or gates or whatever, that if your car is going to be trapped in there, you need some kind of notice on what you have to do to get it out, what it's going to cost you, who you call, and provide a requirement that the, if there is not an attendant on hand on the lot and your car is immobilized, that there needs to be somebody available within an hour to come let you out. Borrow that hour from the great state of Texas. So, I am offering amendments which accomplish all of the above, and you can look at them one of two ways. The first way is the proposed Budge amendments, which were adopted by the Transportation Committee. The first way is the proposed Budge amendments, which were adopted by the Transportation Committee. And it's seven amendments which accomplish what I just described. I've also presented a version of this ordinance that is as amended, that incorporates all seven of those amendments, so you can read it either way, you, you know, they both essentially say the same thing, they just try to make it clear in different ways. So moved.
Second. Okay. Moving second, any discussion on the amendments?
Will these amendments obviate some of the succeeding legislation?
Yes.
I love that idea.
And kind of preview to jump ahead, I'm gonna be withdrawing two pieces of legislation I sponsored, O thirty-six seventeen and R twenty-two seventeen, but we'll get to that when we get to them. So these amendments will offset some in the future. Any discussion on the amendments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O thirty-seven seventeen as amended on second reader?
So moved, second.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to be added as a sponsor.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O thirty-seven seventeen on third reader?
So moved.
Second? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is resolution R twenty-four seventeen, parking places and parking lots, fees.
Is there a motion to adopt R twenty-four seventeen?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Alderman Budge?
Go ahead.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt, oh, I apologize, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is resolution R thirty-three seventeen, parking places and parking lots, fine.
Is there a motion to adopt R thirty-three seventeen?
So moved, second.
I believe there's an amendment, sponsors like to speak to him at this time. Do you wanna talk about your amendment?
Sir?
Yes.
The amendment was to raise the fine for second and subsequent offenses to, excuse me, the amendment was to raise second and subsequent offenses to five-hundred dollars from two-fifty, which is the amount of the first offense.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why?
I think it's obvious that they are less likely to commit the crime once the fine is raised on.
Enough for me.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt R thirty-three seventeen as amended on second reader?
So moved, second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O thirty-six seventeen, wheel immobilization devices prohibited.
This was legislation that I had brought forward after talking with the city manager, some of our departments, and some of the commissions that I represented. They suggested that this legislation be withdrawn at this time. So certainly, sure, I can't withdraw, so I would entertain a motion from the floor to withdraw on my behalf.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Next item on the agenda is resolution R twenty-three seventeen, wheel immobilization devices, fine.
Same comments I made earlier, people would like to have this withdrawn from the administration's standpoint, so I'd entertain a motion to withdraw.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O thirty-eight seventeen, allowing indoor theaters in the professional office zoning district.
Is there a motion to adopt O thirty-eight seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
We have one amendment, and I'll let the sponsor speak to it this time, Alderman?
Yes, I indicated early on another issue, but this involved the indoor theaters, and we did come back with a planning commission recommendation that the stratification would be between a hundred, over a hundred, less than a hundred seats, but the main concern was also the buffering between specifically two pieces of property in Ward Three, and that was the reason for the amendment, but as a matter of full disclosure, and there was no, there was nothing indicated that there was a problem with this, but just to let everyone know that I do have a piece of property that abuts one of these pieces of property that would be affected.
So, is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion, I'm sorry.
Second, your motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O thirty-eight seventeen as amended on second reader?
Second. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O thirty-eight seventeen on third reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O forty seventeen, residential parking permit amendments.
Is there a motion to adopt O forty seventeen?
So moved, second.
There's a set of amendments, and I'll let the sponsor speak to them at this time.
Yes, the amendments are, the, the legislation as crafted is to require parking stickers for parking in the special residential parking districts, one and two. District four checked in, and requi, the Ward one portion of District four checked in, and also wanted to be added to this. And Parking District Three, I've got mixed opinion, the, I've had mixed feedback on. In discussing this with the Transportation Board and Committee, we ended up feeling that it was most appropriate to essentially go back to the old sticker system, just require everybody to, that's in the special residential parking districts, to have stickers, so that we don't have confusion of, well, if you live on this side of the line, you need a sticker, and if you live on that side of the line, you don't. And, so the amendments acting together implement that. So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt O forty seventeen as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O forty seventeen on third reader?
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O forty-one seventeen, market house tenant lease extension.
Is there a motion to adopt O forty-one seventeen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's one set of amendments from the Finance Committee, I'll let the sponsor speak to them at this time.
Mr. Mayor, during the Finance Committee consideration of this, we thought it was important to make clear that, and we heard tonight from one of the interested parties, that the ongoing negotiations between the city and the two potential tenants should be given time to breathe and hopefully move forward. So our amendment would say that this language would only take place after the city manager declares that there's an impasse in the negotiations. And I, I think that the hope is, so that the timeline of this would flow from that. I think everyone is interested in seeing if these negotiations can bear fruit, and that would sort of protect that, so even if on December thirty-first, maybe they, they're still ongoing, it would sort of sequence these events, so that's the intent.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Arnett?
I certainly support the sense of the amendment, and I definitely hope, as I said earlier to Mr. Lyons, that we can move forward. My worry is, what happens if negotiations are going on, and they're moving in a productive way, and September thirty-first occurs, in which case, the current lease dies?
September thirty-first is already...
I mean, December, December thirty-first. You know, it's an old man, and it's like, December thirty-first, the end of the lease, the current lease runs out. We're still negotiating. Does that mean that the market house goes dark, even while we're pursuing successful negotiations for a new lease?
Could we ask the city manager to address this question?
Could. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir, the, the current lease provides that if the December thirty-first date passes, it goes to month-to-month.
Okay.
So that would take care of that interim period, if such period existed.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
I asked this question at lunch today, and I'd like for the benefit of the community to hear. So if we, if the current tenant decides to not stay, what is our option? This is one question, I have more than one question.
Well, I think that would be unusual if the current tenant is involved in the lease negotiations, which, which he is. But he does have that option, at any point.
So that's not a likely scenario, that the current tenant...
I think it's unlikely, yes.
Since he's still in negotiations. And if, if we pass this legislation, and negotiations finish in February, does this negate this contract, I mean, this legislation?
If, if, under two circumstances I can think of, if we fail to, to reach a satisfactory conclusion with each, either one of the two proposers, that would be an impasse. One, two, if we brought a lease arrangement to the city council, and the city council said, "No, thank you, we would rather do something else", then, then this legislation would kick in at that point, because there would be an impasse. But that would be a council determination, as opposed to a failure to, to negotiate. So I think those would be the two circumstances where I think this legislation would kick in, and another twelve months could be, could be had.
I'm not sure that was my question. We, we enter a lease for another year, and we, with the current tenant.
Yeah.
This just gives us the possibility of entering, the current tenant would have to sign it, but basically, I think he would prefer to go on a month-to-month basis at this point.
So, okay, so we would automatically go to a month-to-month with him? We will not definitely sign a one-year lease with him?
No, that is correct.
Okay.
That would have to come back to the council.
That what you meant, absolutely, I misunderstood.
Only in the event of an impasse would the twelve-month even be available, right? Yes, sir, otherwise, it's monthly.
Right, exactly, okay, thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
But I do think Alderman Finlayson raises an interesting scenario. This puts an awful lot of pressure on the next council to accept a lease agreement negotiated by the administration. Otherwise, the market house will go dark, and we all know what death that is to politicians in this town. So, I mean, I think we're giving, we're putting the next council in some peril. I don't know what, what we can do about that, but they're gonna be pretty much faced with a take-it-or-leave-it.
They signed up for it.
Yeah, that's right. The pool's ran again. Yeah, but I don't know what we can, we can't cover every contingency.
So, any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O forty-one seventeen as amended on second reader?
So moved, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Job change, discussion? Discussion?
Mr. Andrews, I just want to be clear about what your recommendation is from, on behalf of the administration. Do you want this legislation to pass as amended?
Yes, sir, that's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt O forty-one seventeen on third reader?
So moved, second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
We'll take a ten-minute break and reconvene. Is there a motion to adopt O forty-five seventeen?
Time for some trash talk. So moved.
Second. All right. There's some amendments by the rules and city government, and I'll let the sponsor speak to them at this time.
The rules and city government would move to limit this to the historic district, rather than citywide. I think there's gonna be some, there's gonna be a very narrow time window for this trash to get collected, and we're gonna be very lucky vendors can do it in the historic district. But in the community, the push that I'm getting is, they'd rather trash be collected later in the morning, not earlier in the morning. So, we recommended adding on line, page two, line twelve, after day, insert in the historic district only.
Okay. I so moved.
Is there a second to that? Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O forty-five seventeen as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O forty-five seventeen on third reader?
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll? Aye.
Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Budge? Alderman... Oh, sorry.
Here.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
I'm staying.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O forty-six seventeen, temporary class C alcoholic beverage license theaters.
Is there a motion to adopt O forty-six seventeen?
So moved.
Right.
There's a set of amendments, and I'll let the sponsor speak to them at this time.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me open them up myself, real quick. These are the amendments from them, so I guess, let me open it real quick. Proposed amendments. I don't see the amendment, unless it's part of the...
It's in the legislation.
Oh, in the legislation.
So if we move the legislation itself, it will take care of the ABCB amendments?
Does that mean we substitute it?
No, no, no.
No.
For, for the sake of keeping this process flowing correctly, I will move the ABCB amendments. I, my interpretation of them is they're largely technical, and legal leaves cleanup and so forth, and I endorse them.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt oh forty-six seventeen as amended on second reader?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt oh forty-six seventeen on third reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Lady.
Aye.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Budge. Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Lippman.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is resolution R thirty-one seventeen, proposed amendment to FY twenty eighteen fee schedule.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I don't believe there's any amendments on this one.
No, no.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt, oh, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Lady.
Aye.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Lippman.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is resolution R twenty-seven seventeen, hate-free zone.
Is there a motion to adopt R twenty-seven seventeen on, or, on second reader?
All right.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is item removed from the consent calendar, legislative actions on section, second reader, beginning oh forty-four seventeen, exempt service, economic development manager.
Is there a motion to adopt oh forty-four seventeen on second reader?
So moved. Right.
Uh, discussion? Alderman Finlayson?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of, well, one question. Um, can you tell me, Mr. Mayor, when this was moved from exempt service to begin with, and why?
City Manager, might be able to speak to that?
Alderman, I asked Ms. Hopkins to research this, um, when I knew you were going to remove the consent agenda, anticipating that question. And we've gone back as far as nineteen ninety-six, and that position has been exempt at least back until that time.
So when was it moved from exempt service? I mean, we're talking about moving it to exempt service now, but obviously, something changed to remove it from exempt service.
I, I think I can answer that.
Alderman Arnett?
So we had, as you recall, Alderman Finlayson, a whole set of things. We had Mike Myron as our economic development person, then Alderman Israel and I proposed legislation to create the Department of Economic Affairs. Uh, we moved from, and that was passed, but never really staffed, we moved from that to the, uh, Annapolis Economic Development Corporation, at which point this position went away. Then we removed funding from the Economic Development Corporation, and we reestablished this position in planning and zoning. And I think at that point, we didn't really reestablish it the way it was back when Mike Myron held the position.
Well, I recall when we both came on the council, Mike Myron was the economic development coordinator. I don't know whether he, his position was as a director or not. And I do remember us creating the Economic Development Corporation, and I can understand why at that time it would have been removed. Come on down. Why it would have been removed from-
Since you had to wait so long, you might as well talk.
And I do apologize, had I known you were sitting here, I would have asked that it be moved up on the agenda. And I, I really, now that I, I, my memory is refreshed as to why this might have happened, I, I am in support of this position being an exempt position. I have a problem, and my problem is, as usual, an equity issue. You know, again, two weeks ago, we had legislation that dealt with trying to right some wrongs with some other employees, and for whatever reason, it was untimely, we couldn't get that done. And now we have another piece of legislation that deals with one person, and it's appropriate to take action now. So I'm just not comfortable with us not treating everyone equally, fairly, with, you know, parity. So that's my concern. So I would rather postpone action and take it when we can deal with all of the personnel issues that we have to address. So that would be my only objection to this legislation right now.
Would you like me to speak to that, or go back to the other question first?
Whichever.
Okay. The other question first was that, uh, Mike Myron, in his position of economic affairs director, wasn't at a director level until his retirement, um, April first of two thousand and ten. It appears as if there was legislation that was introduced, as, as Alderman Arnett had said, that dealt completely with that entire, um, function within the city. And it, it, um, basically dropped out as being an assigned position, an identified position that was in the exempt service there, and it was removed from the code, um, with legislation. Uh, we came back later, um, under this administration, and, uh, created the position of economic development manager. It was created as a contractual position initially, and was budgeted and approved budget, uh, approved in the budget for the position to become, um, a fully in the exempt service. There was another position that also was a contractual conversion, that was part of this budget, so we did look at our contract positions that were eligible for, or made the consideration we've done in the past for, um, a, a movement into a more permanent position.
And Alderman, to the, to the timing question, I thought we had dealt with this in the FY eighteen budget last spring. Uh, and, and it appears we did not, because we did not add it to the, the pay scheme as an exempt position, but we, we, I thought we had done that, and we had not. Actually, it was the clerk's office that caught the, uh, the omission, um, and suggested this fix.
And, and we have to, we have to identify exempt service positions specifically by title in that section of the code. The exempt service titles, um, must be enumerated, must be identified specifically, and voted upon as members of the exempt service, as opposed to the pay plan being adopted for the civil service positions. And we adopted the pay plan already, and, um, that was, that was done, uh, coincident with the budget approval back in June. And, and it's, it is clearly an attempt only to do cleanup with this, this particular legislation, specifically identifying the exempt service title as it, where it should be. And then there were some other items that we, um, needed to fix, which was the attorney one and attorney two, it had numbers rather than Roman numerals on it, and we said, well, let's just, we see it, let's fix that as well.
Okay, are there any other positions that will need a fix?
Uh, not, we, we went through the contractual positions at that time, you know, we, we heard you before, you know, about delaying things, and we went through the contractual positions that the city does have. Uh, the other position is in recreation and parks, so the office, uh, support person to the director was the, the position that was also included in the budget. That was a civil service position, it didn't need to be enumerated specifically in the code, and is being handled accordingly. Um, this, this, unfortunately, you know, you try to do a lot of things all at the same time, and, and we should have at that time, when legislation was before you, to identify, at the time we were dealing with the pay plan, this particular title in the exempt service. So, it's, it's just trying to do due diligence, do the right thing, do it in the right place, and complete the action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, could say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Do we need a roll call vote? What's that? Is there a motion to adopt on third reader?
So moved. Right.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor and Lady.
Aye.
Alderman Piper, for the last time.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Here.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Lippman, for the last time.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby, for the last time.
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
Before we adjourn, I think there's a couple things, I know a number of my colleagues want to say about our outgoing member, members, and reminiscing on the last four years, and so, I think I'll go first in this and just say, it's really been an honor to work with each of you. You know, I look back at the last four years, and I think about what we got accomplished. I look at really the tone and the way we did it, and look what happens on the national stage in other areas. We haven't had these bitter back-and-forth fights. At times, it's got testy, even amongst the public and ourselves, but I think we've always conducted ourselves well. And I want to thank everyone for their service, and how thankless of a job it is, and I wish everyone much success in the future. Alderman Pindell Charles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I hope I can- Contrary to- More three residents do watch this program, I can tell you that, because I do get a lot of comments. And one of the comments that they asked me, and one of the questions that they asked me is, "You all seem to get along so well." And I said, "Well, if you throw nine random people together, I think we get along exceptionally well." And part of it is two reasons. Number one, the lunches have, for me, have been the most beneficial thing for this council, for me, because I work part-time, I mean, because I work full-time, uh, twenty miles away, those lunches have been the best thing that we could have done. The second thing is, um, Alderman Budge has, um, instituted the consent calendar, and that has been huge. I have never, and I've worked a lot of jobs, probably never worked with a finer group of people. I will miss you. I will miss you all. And I'm not a crying lady. Joe, and Jared, and Kenny, and Ian, you all have been the greatest. As the junior member, junior Alderman, Alderperson, I have learned so much, we have always agreed. But I have had such an enjoyable time, you're like family, you really, really are. I just really love you all, just, I'm gonna miss you. I really am. I mean, I look forward to the next group, but it's something about the first group of people you work with, it's something really, really, really special. And, and I, I can't say it enough, I, I really, really enjoyed you all. It has been a, a great, a great opportunity, and I'm not leaving out Ross, or Fred, or Sheila.
You can leave him out, it's all right.
Or the mayor. But I know this is, this is your last night, and, and I just, I, I, I love you all. Thank you so much for what you've given to me and my family, I appreciate it, thank you.
Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, would echo the, uh, Rhonda's comments, uh, without the tears. But, um, one thing, I, I will certainly miss working with you, but one thing I will not miss, and I plan on making it a point not to miss, and that's your friendship. It's been, uh, it's been wonderful working with you and, and getting to know you, I consider each and every one of you friends, and, uh, best of luck, even though we may need it more.
Alderman Budge?
Yes, I'd like to, um, thank, first of all, the voters who put me in this chair, who elected me to serve here, and those who didn't. The, I hope that I've managed to help the, uh, can, my constituents over the last four years, and leave Annapolis a better place than I found it. And I would also like to thank all of the folks who came down to City Hall, or wrote or commented, especially the opposition, because it is the opposition that makes democracy work. And while we didn't always agree, and we didn't always see eye to eye on everything, I'd like to say thank you to all of you for making our part of democracy work, and work exceptionally well. I'd also like to thank the city staff, um, who have done so much, who have helped so mu, who have helped me so much on so many different projects. And without the city staff and their heroic efforts, none of what we've accomplished would have been possible, so, Mr. City Manager, please thank them. And finally, and certainly not least, I would like to thank my colleagues. You taught me so much about how to be a legislator when I started as a novice, just a shade over four years ago. We've worked on a lot of projects together, and in the process, we've become friends, which was, which I never expected. And I value your friendship, um, like Alderman Peon and, and Alderman Pindell Charles, I hope we will, uh, stay in, in touch. And for those of you who, uh, are running for reelection, I wish you my best. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, um, totally second the sentiments and the emotion that Rhonda expressed. Uh, this is a bittersweet moment, I think, um, there will be, um, replacements for even, some of us are still in the balance, that will be up to the task, but, um, it, it is a really good blend of intellect and friendship and understanding. I, um, I had the occasion to write for the debate I'm facing on Thursday, all of the things that I do as Alderman, and I don't think there is anyone who has any appreciation for the amount of time that we spend, and it has to be out of devotion, because it sure isn't out of compensation. And Joe is right, we do it with a lot of help from the staff, um, and we do it with a lot of help from each other. And, uh, so I really do appreciate our colleagues who are leaving us, I, um, don't think we're gonna let you go away entirely, we'll be calling you. And Joe, you learned to be such a good legislator, I'm gonna be calling you a lot. But, really do want to thank you, uh, want to thank you, uh, very much for the relationship, the positive relationship.
Don't call him on his landline if you expect him to pick up.
Mr. Andrews?
I'm, uh, way too old and cranky to get too much, but, on behalf of the staff, we want to say it's been a pleasure working with this council. You have driven us a little bit crazy from time to time, but that's largely due to Alderman Arnett and Alderman Lippman.
I think that's a compliment.
We, uh, we will sincerely miss those of you that will be, will be leaving. Personal note, I have worked for a lot of elected officials, and with a lot of elected officials over fifty-plus years, and you all are absolutely the best, and you've made me coming out of retirement worthwhile.
Alderman Finlayson?
As the senior member of the council, and I came on with Alderman Arnett, I'm only senior by ten minutes. Two minutes, okay. I don't think any of us stepped into this chamber knowing what to expect. It was truly on-the-job training. But the one thing that we had in common was our commitment and our love of our community, whether it's finance, or the environment, or the historic district, or traffic, or public safety, or economic development, or- Whether it's finance, or the environment, or the historic district, or traffic, or public safety, or economic development, or transportation and housing. We have all been able to learn and be able to step up to do our very, very best. Those of you who are leaving, and there may be more of us leaving than we realize, I admire you greatly, I appreciate all that you have done to make us all better legislators, because it is a team effort. Not, not one of us could have done this successfully alone, but we've come together as a team, we've worked as a team, and we've been successful as a team. Our team would not have been successful without staff, Regina, who has kept us together.
I just want to say for the record, I'm a senior member on the council.
Touche. But the entire staff, and, and I think they all know how I feel, um, when it comes, and I see two of my favorite, no, I take that back, I'm sorry. In the back of the room, but, being public safety, right, I said that, but it, it's been all of us working together for our city. So those of you who are leaving us, um, I wish you all the very best, we will continue to count on you and to look forward to your advice and experiences, and Monday nights will always be... McGarvieous. Good luck, everybody.
Alderman Piper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'll be, I'll be brief, I, uh, I'm reminded one of my favorite political expressions, that we've, uh, we're reaching the point in the night where everything there is to be said has been said, just not by everybody, so I know everyone else wants to, wants to join in here, but I, I certainly, um, in the eight years I've been on this council, it's been an honor to serve with all of you, with all of this, the department heads, um, here, and folks actually who, who've moved through. I mean, the, the, the reality of doing this job for a while, is I look around and see all my colleagues who we served with, but you also see the folks who sat in those chairs before them, and that, um, continuity in this city is amazing. It's amazing to see who, people who put themselves forward, you get to see through how people present themselves to you here, or in your neighborhood, um, anywhere you go in the city, the, the life of this city, which is an amazing, diverse, fascinating place to live, and when you see it, any community, I would recommend anybody to put their name on a ballot and try and do this, because when you get to sit here, and you see your community through that lens, um, it's a very valuable experience. So I, as someone who's worked in politics and policy for a long time, down the road in Washington, and decided to run, because I was sort of disgusted by what my life in Washington had turned into, um, the, the, the reality is, the eight years here of doing politics and policy at this level has been, um, very rewarding, probably, more so than twenty years in Washington, and I think that's because of the quality of the people, and the way we've approached trying to take on complicated issues, but doing it with a sense of humor, and having a good time. Um, and I think that's important, and I hope our friends and neighbors see that, um, it's, it's, it's a rare thing, so, thank you for the, uh, the honor to do it with you.
Does that mean you're so disgusted with what's going on here that you're actually going back to Washington?
Alderman Currie?
Yeah, um, I'd like to, I'd like to thank the citizens of Annapolis, especially those in War VI, who, they put me in office twice. I'd, I would like to thank this body and every employee of the city of Annapolis for all their hard work. It's been rewarding to serve you in this capacity, and I can only hope that I've done so in the best interest of the city of Annapolis and its citizens. The skills of learning and ability to compromise has not appeared anywhere else in my earlier life. I leave a more enriched person because of this experience, and I thank all of you for it. Finally, I'm grateful for the eight years afforded me to serve, I love the city of Annapolis, God bless you all, thank you.
I made my comments at the last meeting's education, so I'll, I think I'll just rest on my comments then, you know, I, I appreciate and respect you all, and, uh, thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it.